Okay. Okay, Krista, it's your, it's your floor.
Okay. So, welcome back. We haven't met, I guess, in probably a month or so. I think the last time we met was in May. And that last time, we just talked about a bunch of topics, got feedback on the multifamily apartment, the residential zone, senior housing, and non-conforming uses. And so what I'd like to do today is to dive a little deeper into one of those topics, which is senior housing, and spend some time talking about options that I found mostly doing research on the American Planning Association's website, which has quite a bit of information on it. And then hopefully have a conversation at the end about the ideas that I'm proposing, or at least the options I'm proposing, and whether we think they're good options for New Canaan. And if so, where we might want to see these types of things. So that's the main agenda. And then hopefully at the end, we'll just have a couple of minutes to give you a quick update on a group called Desegregate Connecticut and some of the things they're working on. I know Lynn sent out a link before the meeting, so maybe you've had a chance to check that out anyway. So Lynn, if you could bring up the presentation.
Can you see it?
Okay. So the first thing I wanted to do is to just get us on the same page in terms of some of the terminology I'll be using about different categories of senior housing. These are things that are probably all familiar to you. I just, like I said, want to get us on the same page. And I've listed them in order from bottom to top in terms of the amount of support or care that's required in each one. So I'm just going to do this quickly because, like I said, I think they're self-explanatory for the most part. But Asian places, when seniors are able to stay in their current homes safely, independently, and comfortably. Independent living can be single or multifamily units, but they're ideally smaller size. Seniors are able to downsize a little bit, have less maintenance, less responsibilities for the exterior. But they're able to still live there and perform all daily activities independently, meaning that they don't need any assistance. I consider age-restricted housing to be a subset of independent living. So it's the same concept where a senior would live individually. But it's age-restricted in terms of there's a deed restriction that prevents it from being sold to somebody under the age of 55 is the youngest. Also, sometimes a 62 or 65 are the ages that you'll see. And then assisted living is one step additional care from that. Typically, those are multifamily units for people who, they're age-restricted for people 55 and older who need some additional help with the activities of daily living, but they don't need full nursing services yet. When you get to that level, and even with some of the age-restricted housing, you start to see some of the communal amenities provided, such as social activities, maybe some food options, transportation, things like that. And then obviously, the highest level of care is nursing homes. And those are almost always multifamily units that provide non-acute inpatient care to elderly patients who need nursing services to get through their day. So I just want to point out, I think, I think any community that's ideally doing a great job of taking care of their seniors would have this whole spectrum. I mean, obviously, you may need more of one category and less of another. But I think these are all probably categories that we should be considering that we need. And frankly, I think, I mean, some of you probably know more than I. I haven't done a ton of research into New Canaan in particular, but I've been here for a little bit. And it seems to me we have some of this stuff already. In fact, we may have the full spectrum on some level already. I think the Farm Road Waveney Care Center provides both assisted living and nursing homes. As far as I know, that in at Waveney and the Schoolhouse Apartments are age-restricted. And then, you know, throughout town, we probably have smaller units that are appropriate for independent living for seniors. And I'm sure many seniors just choose to age in their existing homes here. So, you know, none of this is to say that we're missing any categories, but there may be things we could do to make a more robust profile of senior housing in town. All right, next slide, Lynn.
So now I'm just going to go into more detail. I don't mean to interrupt, but could everyone just put themselves on mute because the feedback's really annoying? Like if you're not Chris.
And then I'll take, I have a stopping point at the end where I take questions. So then Lynn can unmute you again, maybe? Does that work, Lynn?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the first option, like I said, is pretty self-explanatory. That's aging in place. From the research I did, that seems to be the most popular choice for seniors. That's the ideal scenario. I think the statistics are something like 85 to 90% of seniors nationally would like to age in their homes. Really, there's no zoning or physical development implications of doing that because, you know, we already have single-family homes and multifamily units in town. But it can require a municipality to provide social services, which we, I think we do here in terms of meals on meals, the get-about vans, and also physical rehabilitation programs that help seniors to modify their existing residence in ways that work with their maybe declining level of mobility. So maybe they need a wheelchair ramp or chair lifts or grab bars in the showers. I know some municipalities provide grant programs to help facilitate seniors to age in their homes. Next slide. Obviously, another fairly self-explanatory option is multi-generational housing. Again, that allows seniors to age in place, and it's when two or more generations of the family live together. The classic example would be elderly parents moving in with their children or grandchildren. But in the COVID-19 world, I think we also see a lot of children moving in with their parents just to get sort of some help with childcare. And obviously, there's, it's a synchronistic relationship. It's mutually beneficial for both the elder resident and the younger family in terms of, you know, the household chores are getting done for the elder resident. Maybe the family needs help with childcare, like I already said. Obviously, this can happen again without any changes to our zoning. We certainly have houses of a magnitude here that you could have multi-generational families living together. The picture on the slide is actually from Singapore. And so in some places, people actually build units or houses with the intention that they're going to be multi-generational, in which case they might provide multiple master suites or some sort of attached accessory dwelling unit, like a basement apartment or something for one portion of the family to live in, which we also allow to happen here. One thing I came across that I thought was interesting is, I can't remember which place this was. It might have been in Maryland somewhere, but they were talking about doing a home sharing program where they're actually matching seniors in their community with people who had homes that were suitable for multi-generational living, which again, I mean, provides that synchronicity of having the senior have someone, you know, they're not alone. They have some help with the daily maintenance of the household. But then the younger generation also is maybe able to afford to live in a house or in a community that they wouldn't otherwise be able to live in. So it's just something I thought I'd include there, is something to consider. Next slide. So this one was new to me in terms of a way that seniors age in place. And again, this is less zoning and more sort of social programming. But it's called the Village Movement, and it came out of the Beacon Hill neighborhood of Boston in the early 2000s. And basically, the concept is that seniors form a nonprofit organization to provide the support and services that their members need. So instead of relying on the government to, you know, maybe do a meals-on-wheels program or nonprofit institutions, they form their own group, which can do, you know, anything they decide to do, but things like home safety modifications, transportation, health and wellness programs, social activities. And so that concept, I guess, is pretty popular. And as you can see on the slide, is 36 states with 125 more under development already. So it's something that people are doing. Next slide. All right, so now getting into more independent living, where a senior may want to downsize from their existing house. And the first option that we'll talk about is accessory dwelling units. I know this is something that you guys are all familiar with because it's something we already allow in New Canaan. I just wanted to point it out here because I think there's a lot of great potential for accessory dwelling units. And so maybe there's opportunities to enhance what we already have. I don't know. I haven't looked into that yet, but it's just something that I came across a lot. You know, typically, these are, these are smaller units on the same lot as a single-family home, but they provide all aspects of daily living, such as cooking, eating, sanitation, and sleeping. So because they're smaller, they're typically more affordable. I think that accessory dwelling units do a great job of fitting into the character of the neighborhood, especially in a community like New Canaan, where we have, at least in some parts, more of a rural character. And you have typically a lot of outbuildings and other buildings on the property. I don't think that this really stands out in any way that would make it feel different and allow seniors to maybe stay in close proximity to their children who are living in the main house or vice versa. Maybe the senior stays in the main house and generates an income off of the accessory dwelling unit. Also provides an opportunity for space for caregivers if a senior gets to that point and needing some additional help. Next slide. So also in independent living, we have cohousing communities. This one was new to me. Basically, this is clustered housing around a common, a common green space or just some sort of common center space, as you can see from the picture. But they almost always also include a common house where they've got a communal kitchen, living space where they might do activities and other programming. And, you know, some, they can be from 20 to 40 single-family units or attached homes like townhomes. So, you know, it's not necessarily small in its scale of development. I don't know if that's the smallest they can come. But a lot of the cohousing communities seem to be more about the collaborative style of management than the actual, like, what the community looks like, you know, on a, on a plan. And so it's, it's more of a cooperative style of management where you buy into this community and then, you know, you help manage it and decide the programming. And so that's cohousing. Next slide. So another option for downsized living, independent living are, I mean, there's a bunch of names for these. Pocket neighborhoods, bungalow courts, cottage communities, which are clustered small homes, typically 1,000 square feet or less around a common green space. And they can come in size from four units to 12 units. They're typically built at double the density of some of the surrounding single-family homes just to make them pencil out on paper. And again, actually, we'll get to that in a minute, but so this could, well, we'll get to that in a minute, too. Anyway, this is another option for independent living. Next slide. And then the last one that I'll throw out there are duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes, also known as two, three, and four-unit developments. This provides smaller unit options for, you know, seniors or anybody, frankly, that wants to live in our community. And one of the things I like about these, and I know these pictures aren't the best. The one on the left is actually in New Canaan. The other two, obviously, are not. But I feel like the scale of the two, three, and four-unit developments can fit pretty well into an existing single-family neighborhood, particularly probably more in our in-town neighborhoods, obviously, than in the two or four-acre zone. And so, you know, that's one thing I like about them. And also, as you can see from the one on the right, oftentimes, you can take, and they do this in urban areas all the time, bigger homes like old Victorians and whatnot. And Lord knows, we had, like I said at the beginning, we have a lot of large homes in New Canaan and make them into smaller units. So it doesn't always have to be a new construction. It can be a retrofit of an older construction. Okay, so age-restricted housing. What I want to first say about all of those examples I just gave, the pocket neighborhoods, the duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes, cohousing, accessory dwelling units. Those all work actually to provide a more affordable level of housing for any demographic in our community. They don't have to be just for seniors. They could be for young professionals. They could be for young couples without kids. They could be for single-parent households. And so I think we'll come back to this again in other conversations we're going to have because, you know, affordable housing is also not on the agenda tonight, but on the agenda for the future. So I think those are options that exist for more than just seniors. Now, if you want to make them exclusive to seniors, then you do the deed restriction to make them age-restricted housing. And any of those could be age-restricted if, you know, the owner chose to do that. I had two ideas while I was doing this that I really didn't find any support for. Like, they haven't been done other places, but I figured I'd just throw them out as options for conversational purposes. One thought I had was, in terms of age-restricted housing, is, you know, why couldn't we do something like inclusionary zoning that, where we have set-asides for affordable units? You could have set-asides for senior units. So any new multifamily that was being built, a certain percentage of the units could be set aside and deed-restricted for seniors, which would mean we'd also want to probably mandate that they have universal design or at least a basic level of accessibility. You know, we wouldn't obviously be wanting stairs, probably elevators, things like that. So that's one thought I had. And then the other thought I had is, you know, I guess I'm kind of hot on the accessory dwelling unit thing right now. But similar to the home sharing option I mentioned at the beginning for multi-generational homes, I think we have probably an untapped stock of accessory dwelling units that maybe, you know, people just don't run out for whatever reason. But I could see the town or a municipality creating a program where you match seniors with homeowners that have accessory dwelling units that are underutilized and, you know, create an affordable way for seniors to stay in the community that way and maybe even provide some sort of incentive for homeowners to do that, whether it's tax breaks or something else. But anyway, those are kind of out-of-the-box thoughts. Those aren't really, like I said, supported. So then now we're getting into bigger-scale housing, although this is still relatively small. And this can be done for age-restricted, independent units, assisted living, or nursing homes. And basically, it's what I'm going to call small-scale multifamily. But in the, in research, it's been called de-institutionalized senior housing. And there's been a movement over the last 20 years to kind of get back to a more personal level of care in senior housing that some of these big, huge communities feel a little too institutional for some people. So this is basically multifamily living for three to 16 elders, whereby each resident would have their own bedroom and bathroom suite, but there's a communal kitchen, dining, and living space. There would be some level of staffing there, whether it's nursing care or some lesser level of staffing to provide activities and, you know, just cooking and general care for the seniors. And, you know, one thing I think that's great, good about this option is that it can blend into existing neighborhoods, whether they're urban, rural, or suburban. And again, given the size of some of the homes in New Canaan, I'm not sure that, you know, this would have to stand out if it was designed correctly. The two best-known nonprofits in this movement are the Green House Project and the Eden Alternative. And so they've been building these types of things around the United States for about the last 20 years. All right, next slide. And so then the last option I came up with, which is one I think we're all familiar with, is just the typical large-scale multifamily senior community. Again, whether it's independent living, whether it's assisted living or nursing homes. When you get to this level, they come, you know, typically fully stocked with all the amenities, recreational facilities, social programs, transportation services. So, you know, that's an option. We've seen the bottom right is actually the one that was presented to us. So they obviously come in different sizes and scales, but they're, they're similar in terms of what they do. Okay, so I think, yeah, I think the next slide is for comments, questions, or thoughts on things I presented. What, what do you like? What do you hate? What don't you understand? Lynn, if you could unmute them. Anybody?
I'll offer just a couple of quick thoughts. As you guys may know, I invest in affordable and senior housing for a living. Have invested in a fair amount of senior-only units professionally. Virtually all of the developments are driven by the presence of low-income housing tax credits, which can't finance almost any of this stuff without the presence of credits. And deed restrictions are used in almost all cases. The interesting thing about the aggregate or the congregate senior model is that a lot of that financially is not working throughout the United States right now. Much of it is built on a high level of real estate debt leverage. And consequently, one of the real problems that comes with units, like the ones that you just saw at the end, is that they are affordable only to high-income seniors. For example, a one-bedroom unit in, in a space like that can easily be $8,400, $8,500 a month with virtually no assistance. And so consequently, what you generate is housing that's wonderful for high-income seniors, but does very little for lower-income seniors. And in addition, you have a problem, which is attributable frankly to the real estate development models, which says that a developer can very easily build housing using low-income housing tax credits dedicated to seniors or disabled or to income or a crossover of that group. But they actually have to put virtually none of their own money in. It's particularly true in the northeastern states. Doubly true, we have 830G and similar restrictions in Massachusetts. So the, an interesting wrinkle to all of this is there's very little of this housing built anywhere that doesn't have the use of either a low-income housing tax credit and investment tax credit or some other form of tax credit that provides, in effect, an equity layer.
Great. That's really helpful. And I think you're going to have a lot to help us with on this because I'm weak on the financing piece. So I'm glad to have you helping out.
It doesn't work without a subsidy is the short answer.
Right. Well, what I heard is it doesn't work without a subsidy unless you're willing to do it for high net worth people.
Well, if you're providing housing product to wealthy people, everything changes.
Right.
But if you're looking for something even for moderate or upper-moderate income, it's different. I mean, if you think about the Waveney project near St. Mark's and the Historical Society, the big issue they had was the cost of land. And they already owned a chunk of it. It was just sitting there fallow. So that money was out the door as far as buying that. And the rest of the footprint was the neighbor, which is the Historical Society, which was a motivated seller because they needed money and had this odd lot that they didn't need. And they needed to put a lot of product on a small amount of space. So that's what you end up. One of the challenges we have here is simply that your cost of land is substantial and that will cause any number of transactions not to pencil, in my view.
Any other thoughts?
Well, Art, when, when you were making those points, were you just, were you talking about all scenarios or just the last scenario?
No, it actually applies to all. And in fact, an interesting wrinkle that comes out of something like the units that were built most recently is it actually adds to the number of units you need to add to satisfy your low-income characterizations. This was also true with the project downtown because unless you have units that meet the, a very specific measurement of affordable income, any additional unit then creates the need to add additional units. I spoke publicly, actually, the public hearings a couple of years ago about the project downtown because even though they were, quote, "going to create units that were affordable", it actually increased the number of units that New Canaan will ultimately need to deliver to meet the 830G requirements after we get through the period of standstill. And, you know, the, the rules are actually very specific, right down to the number of square feet per unit that you can use. And, you know, a number of, for example, amenities that are allowable underneath the rules if you are using credit financing. I can assure you, because I've done this stuff in 32 states, I can assure you that there has never been in the northeast housing that has been built in the last decade that doesn't use credits, that isn't targeted to high-income people. There's lots of it being targeted to high-income people. And, you know, you have lots of municipalities that now require set-aside units in order for people to get things done. So at least it doesn't increase your 830G requirement. But virtually all of the housing now is in fact built with some form of, of the credits. And the developers don't have to put much of their own money in as a result.
Okay, but so that's just if we're doing age-restricted housing. I mean, we could build these smaller-sized independent living units. And, I mean, they're available to any demographic group, and they don't necessarily require the same subsidy that you're talking about.
Absolutely not. The only thing is each time you add a unit of housing, you have to meet your 830G requirements.
Got that. Okay.
Just a couple of thoughts on some of the slides. The Village Movement and Beacon, Beacon Hill, Beacon Hill is a very wealthy area. And, you know, we have St. Put, New Canaan, which is, you know, a close cousin of that. We're a wealthy area, too. And so, you know, this tends to be something that you only find in certain demographics, I would think. And then regarding accessory dwelling units, certainly, these are things that people can do now. But, you know, many accessory dwelling units, I remember being approved by this commission, where, you know, we want accessory dwelling unit when grandma comes to visit and so forth, as opposed to something that's permanently rented out to a third party, let alone rented out perhaps for a nominal amount, if anything, but, you know, to, to a blood relative. But, you know, it, it seems to be that they want to sort of keep it, keep that unit close and not simply make it a generic rental. I'm not sure how we can make them, make them turn into a generic rental. You know, they volunteer.
Other than incentives, I don't have any silver bullet on that.
The incentive, all I could think of would be some type of town subsidy. They knock something off the property tax if it's to a senior or to someone in another specific demographic. Be a possibility, but I'm sure, assume that's doable.
Right.
Well, why couldn't they be paid rent?
They could. I guess it would just have to be enough to make it something they want to do. I mean, if they're inclined to just keep it close and only for, you know, family coming to visit, it's going to have to be enough to make it profitable for them or.
Because, I mean, to John's point, Jane, correct my memory. I mean, John is right. We've always sort of said the accessory dwelling unit is okay, assuming it is some sort of family member, right? Jane, you're on mute. Jane, you're, Lynn, Jane's on mute. Jane, still on mute.
Lynn's on mute.
Lynn, do you hear us?
I can hear you.
Can you unmute, Jane?
I, I can, I'm trying to unmute Jane. Not working.
Jane, try unmuting yourself.
Yeah, go down to the lower left.
Nope, we don't hear you.
No, I can't. Jane, can you, do you see the microphone in the bottom left? Does it have a red slash through it?
Yeah, put, Jane, put your cursor over your picture.
And normal, okay.
There you go. We got you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, you're back.
Okay, the, the one thing that I think we realized going back now maybe 20 years is that we had a huge amount of illegal apartments. And they were, people were getting good rent for them. That was not an issue. Actually, it worked out fairly well, but we decided it was probably a good idea to try and get as much of this legal as we could. The next P O C D is really encouraged, these, these units. And we did not have any kind of a stipulation to have any family. You can, you can rent it to your family, you can rent it to a friend, but you could also rent it at market rate to anybody else. So, but it, we've had very little trouble with these units. It's interesting. Lynn, are you aware of any, a lot of trouble with these units? Lynn, are you aware of any, a lot of trouble with these units?
I mean, there was trouble with some, but they predate me. They go back to like when Frank Auer was here and prior to him. They really go back like a while, like 45 planners, it's like early 2000s. I don't think there's currently, we have any problems with them.
No, I think what happened too, we were still with some legal, illegal units at that point in time. And that made a little bit of a difference. That's why I always ask when we have an application, do you want an accessory dwelling unit? Because people are giving up an opportunity to rent and they're also giving up the town an opportunity to have something for senior housing or another type of housing, small house.
If I remember correctly, we did say no to granny pods. Remember those?
Yeah.
They weren't too appealing.
I thought the design was maybe not terrific. But you know, I think if accessory units with an appropriate housing footprint are something to think about, I would find it helpful if you knew more about how many do we have in town that are being used. Frank, you don't know.
That's a tough number to get a hold of.
Yeah.
It may, it may very well be. But you know, I certainly would find that informative to the extent the data.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I think first you have to acknowledge people that it's legal to have it, but you do have to apply for it.
Right. And it's a special permit for detached accessory dwelling unit, which you know, is not impossible, but a little bit of a bar to.
I don't want to go through all that trouble.
Right.
Many communities.
Especially a traffic to a site plan.
The accessory units to be eliminated the moment that the reason for the accessory unit has ceased to exist. The theory being that you don't want to create depreciation or real estate value and you do not want to create a situation where it's possible for somebody to add lots of kids to a school system and not collecting real estate tax revenue. So many communities have an automatic cessation of any ADU. And this is quite, throughout New England, it's quite common to where an ADU is allowed to have that, have to be certified and in fact, to have to have it automatically have to be reapplied for at a point in time.
That's interesting.
Lynn, given that it's 6:40, I think I want to just move to the last slide of my presentation right now and then give a little update on desegregate Connecticut so that we're ready around 6:50 for the next meeting. So that sounds.
It sounds fine.
Krista, can I ask you for a quick, can I ask one more quick question?
Of course.
Have you, have you or Lynn found any of these ideas codified in other towns' regulations?
Around the United States, yes, I haven't looked. You know, I mean, obviously, some of these things exist in Connecticut too, like accessory dwelling units. You know, there's, those exist everywhere, but on the APA's website.
More so the other, the other ideas, not the.
Are you talking Connecticut-specific or just nationally?
General, general.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of stuff on the APA's website nationally. So yes, I have, I can get examples of all of these things, just that may not be specific to Connecticut.
Okay, thanks.
I'll go back to.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go to the last slide and talk about, you know, where we go from here. Yeah, pass that, pass those next two. Okay, so we didn't quite get to where I was hoping to get to tonight, but I think the conversation we had was useful. I'm just gonna take away, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like there is some interest in seeing if there's a way we can use our existing accessory dwelling unit count in a more productive way, perhaps for affordable housing or senior housing in the town. And I'm using that term affordable loosely, not by federal definition, just by, you know, it provides housing options for different demographics of people. So that's one thing I think we might want to explore more. But what I wanted to talk about, and we didn't quite get there, is does our need for these different types of housing vary based on where you are in town? And John Goodwin actually said something at the last meeting that led me to that thought process, which is like, maybe what we do for senior housing in the in-town neighborhoods is different than what we do in the two and four-acre zone. And so I'm just gonna leave you with that to think about, like, you know, which of these options are more appropriate in different parts of town? Or maybe, you know, we would see them across the board. Do, does anyone feel like we need more research on the existing senior housing or indoor senior program options that currently happen here in New Canaan just so that, you know, we're not spending our time talking about things that already exist?
I think they all exist in some form. I think the question is what is the amount we need in various forms? I don't think we're gonna, until we get through this completely, I don't think we're gonna know. Because there are gonna be people who are saying, I'm not really sure I want to be involved in congregate housing just now.
Right.
So we've gotta kind of see where we are with it.
Okay. And then, you know, beyond talking about, and I can bring this type of information in the future. It sounded like John was kind of headed down this path. But what type of development standards would we want to consider to maybe making some of these types of senior housing fit into our town? Or at least looking at other examples of how other places have done it and saying, yeah, you know, that would be great. Or no, we definitely don't want that. So that's on my list. I think, I mean, at some point, we would be remiss to not talk about serious affordability for seniors. You know, not just the generic affordability, but the actual federal requirements for housing affordability and how that relates to seniors and what the need for that is in our community. Some places have gone through the process of actually codifying universal design standards so that when they are doing units that are intended for seniors, they have specific requirements for things like, you know, ramps and elevators and grab bars and one-floor living and, you know, all of those types of things. I talked to Lynn a little bit about the sixth bullet, which is like, what are we looking to achieve with this? And I guess my thought, but I'm open to your thoughts, is that we're probably heading somewhere towards a loose policy or plan in terms of what New Canaan is hoping to achieve with senior housing. And then maybe down the road, hopefully down the road, we find a way to put that into the zoning regulations. But at least at first, we would have something to talk about with any potential developers that came to us. And we could say, hey, look, we've done our research too, and this is what we're hoping, you know, this looks like or what options we'd like you to consider. And then the last thing I have on my list for senior housing is to just, you know, once we get sort of to the end of this project, just figure out how does this fit with the things we already have in our zoning ordinance? Because we do have sections for elderly housing facility, adult housing development, congregate housing and nursing home. And so, you know, it seems to me that somehow we've got to roll this all into something that makes sense rather than having something new and then the old pieces hanging out. So anyway, I'm open to your thoughts on if this is the direction we want to go in, but let me know. And you can even email Lynn after the meeting if you want to spend some time thinking about it.
Krista, I think that was really great, what you just presented. One thing I would just recommend is maybe we have some type of, like, an open forum with the stakeholders who are most interested in this. Like maybe we get people from, they put New Canaan, get people from Waviney and just get some seniors and kind of just shoot around, see what they want, what they're interested in, to have them feel like they're a part of the process.
Yeah, I think that's great.
That also begs the question, who's your customer and what's your customer want? And so you don't want to build it and they don't come. And so, you know, what does the customer want? Does the customer want to stay at home? Does the customer want to be in some kind of commune situation? Like the intentional housing model you had? Do they, you know, you go to a nursing home and you have to, not because you want. And often that's the case with assisted living as well. And as Arthur mentioned, they are not, they do not come cheap. And most nursing homes are, end up with Medicaid pay. Love, that's our Medicaid. So again, who's your customer, what's your customer want?
Yeah, I think that plays into stakeholder meetings in terms of, you know, what seniors in the community want. Any other thoughts?
We may find out with, I know they changed the name, I keep calling it merit apartments, but it was pitched as senior-friendly, but you know, it is. I mean, underground parking and they got a nice elevator, I'm sure, or several nice elevators. So we'll see who wants to live and what they think. We have a live-fire example that's about to happen in size.
Right. But the price on those is pretty steep, right?
It is.
Okay. That's what I thought.
That was actually the point I had made at the public hearing on merit apartments, is that the price points on those units guaranteed that the people who could afford them by definition are in the upper decile of income for what's affordable AMI for Fairfield County. Consequently, what the impact of merit was, was to actually cause us to have to come up with another 18 units of affordable housing because of the 830G implications. And you know, the math on this, and in fact, if it's useful, Krista, I'd be glad to walk through the, the way these things get financed, committee agents, if the committee would like. I'd be glad to walk through a couple of transactions or provide how these things get measured and how CHAF and the state's qualified application plan, if that's useful.
Yeah, I think it could be at some point, or at the very least, like I said at the beginning, I think having your feedback as we're talking about things and just saying, yeah, that's pie in the sky because it's not going to be financially feasible. I think that's going to be pretty helpful. Any last thoughts on senior housing before we give you an update on desegregate Connecticut? Okay. So Lynn, do you want me to do this? I'm prepared to do it, but I'm happy to let you do it if you want.
You can start, I can.
Okay, you fill in the blanks. So Lynn and I have participated in some conference calls with a group called Desegregate Connecticut. And actually, the first one we participated in, they didn't even have a name yet. They were coming up with what they wanted to do. But it's basically a collaborative of individuals and institutions who are looking to change our statewide land use laws to ensure a more just and equitable Connecticut. And obviously, they're striking right now while the iron is hot with all that's going on in the world and the country. So they have three main goals to help eradicate the history of segregation through land use laws. And they're only interested in land use. They're not looking at, you know, housing finance. They're not looking at tax policy. They're not looking at any of those things. It's just strictly land use and zoning. So their goals are to increase housing supply, increase housing diversity and improve processes. And to make those things a reality, their kind of positions are that we should allow accessory dwelling units throughout the state. I guess there's some municipalities that don't. They're really pushing what's called middle housing, which is basically the duplexes, triplexes and quadruplexes that I talked about during the slideshow. They feel that that provides an opportunity for a more diverse community, a more affordable community. They want 10% of the land in a municipality to be reserved for that middle housing and multifamily housing. They want to reduce parking requirements. They want permitting for multifamily to follow the same permitting process for single-family, which would basically remove the ability to require special permits for multifamily housing, unless we required them for single-family housing, which probably we're never going to do. They want training for land use commissioners. They want to eliminate, I think, in the special permit process, the ability to consider whether a project is consistent with the community character because they think that can be used against different classes or races of housing. They want to develop model zoning regulations with a more of a form-based code approach. They want caps on application fees and they want to modernize traffic and sewer standards. So it's an interesting agenda. You know, a lot of it, I think, is good. But what they have come out with is a draft legislation that I guess is currently before our legislature. I don't know if it's really up right now.
Not yet.
Not yet, yeah. So anyway, just something to keep on your radar. I was actually, I mean, like I said, I'd been involved a little bit with the group. And then when I saw their actual whole sort of platform that they're putting out, you know, a lot of the things we talked about tonight on some level are there. I mean, they've gone way beyond us in some other places, like requiring 10% of the land in town to be for multifamily or small, you know, two, three, four-unit apartments. But you know, I don't think, I don't think where we're headed is on the wrong path. I think they're just on maybe a faster trip than we're on. But does anyone have any questions or Lynn, did I miss anything?
I think you captured the bulk of it. John, did you want to, you have your hand raised?
Well, there are a couple of things. I also sent to you a note I received from a representative from, representing Wilton, Westport and Nor. And she was asked by the town council in Wilton to brief them on this legislation that's being considered. It hasn't been formally entered yet, but they mentioned as part of this law, as opposed to the, and though they're working together, is eliminating single-family zoning, which has happened in other cities, requiring 50% as-of-right multifamily zoning within a half-mile radius of transit stations. That's down in Chill and downtown New Canaan. And a quarter-mile radius of major corridors, not defined, but I would, commercial corridors. That would mean what? Downtown, the state highways, allocation of land. Also allowing zoning authorities to terminate non-housing, non-conforming uses of property, even while they're active. That would mean what? Silvermine Market would probably fall under that. Roger Sherman Inn. They're all grandfather non-conforming, if memory serves. Also prohibiting, as mentioned in zoning decisions, traffic conditions, fire safety factors that are not within the local fire codes, as well as the parking issue, which is going to be for us. Their comment on parking is that, where is it? San Antonio's Prominent Use Parking. Their proposal is to cap parking for one space for a one-bedroom, two spaces for a two-bedroom, which is required. So there's that too. There's a lot to it.
Yeah. I was actually really surprised because the first meeting was maybe a month and a half ago. And then all of a sudden, I saw the legislation they put out and I was like, whoa, you guys moved really fast on this.
We'll see where this goes, but it sounds like sort of a centralization of rules.
Yeah, it takes some of the local control for these decisions out of our hands.
And density and much more for people to build things as-of-right. It's worth monitoring, I think.
Yeah, and they have, I think, weekly meetings, webinars on Tuesday. Today's was actually not done by anyone in the group. They tacked onto something being done elsewhere in the country, but it was about the missing middle housing piece. And I was able to join for just the brief end of that. But if you're interested, you can just go to their website. And every week, the webinars come up and you can RSVP.
One of Lynn's emails included a link to the, let's call it draft legislation, which is really where the rubber meets the road. And I would suggest that the commissioners may take some time to read it.
Okay, well, that's all I had for the summit committee. So I guess we can just wait a couple of minutes to start the next meeting.
Thank you, Krista, very good job.
Thank you, Jane.
Yeah, thank you, Krista. Well done.
Lynn, we have a minute or so, but are we good to go? You're on mute. Lynn, you're on mute. Lynn?
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, we are just waiting for, she, I think she just joined. The first case is presenter, so I think she just joined.
But do we, I know Jack is out.
Doc's out and Dan's out, but otherwise.
Is everybody else here? Can you see everybody else?
I see everybody else. We have 10 members.
They can call a roll.
Yeah, well, we have to.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we have eight. Sorry, we have eight on. I think I have everybody. And the only one we're missing is, well, we're missing Karen. If we just wait one more second so she can take her minutes.
Okay.
Otherwise, like.
Do we have Kent?
No, he is not here. He's our missing person. That's why they're eight.
Hey, John, how much longer are you planning to do Zoom meetings?
We need to ask Governor Lamont. I have no clue. I don't think we've had any guidance. Have we, Lynn?
No, it's, the executive order is in effect until September 9th, and unless they extinguish it or extend it, and I don't know which way they're going to go, but executive order B, which sets up the, the meetings via Zoom and electronic format is in effect until September 9th.
And I.
August is for sure than a Zoom meeting.
Yes.
Okay, do we have Karen?
We do. She's just joining, so she's just connecting.
Okay.
I just want to make sure she can hear us before we move forward, but yes.
Okay.
Oh, there's Kent coming in too.
Guys, Karen ready to go?
Let me make sure she just appears to the next page.
Yes, I'm ready. Okay.
Good evening, Karen. Okay, good evening. This is Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting of Tuesday, July 20th, for the new Canaan State of Connecticut. As you, as we have been doing, this will be a Zoom on meeting. Lynn, I'm getting some feedback, by the way.
Getting echo.
Yeah. Anyway, as usual, this, this, the Zoom meeting will be run by Lynn Avney. I ask everyone, both commissioners, presenters, and public to use their name when joining or coming back in with any comments. I also want to note, not just for the commissioners, but also Houston Lane will be continued. So when you all are back next month, one of the things Lynn and I are going to try for next month is to ask for anybody intending to address the commission to let Lynn know beforehand, so we can be more efficient about letting people in and out. Lynn, is there anything you would add to that?
You're on mute.
So much for efficiency.
Sorry, I muted myself because you heard feedback. So yes, no, you said it perfectly. Sorry.
Okay, great. Okay, so let's take a roll call. John Goodwin, I am here. This is Chris Leckey.
Start sucking down the.
Gene, can you talk?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Chris?
Present.
Is it to Scornia?
Present.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Ward?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Nielsen?
Present.
And Mr. Cassavent?
Present.
Okay, great. This evening, Ms. Nielsen, you are seated for Mr. Radman. Mr. Cassavent, you are seated for Mr. Flynn. I have one other announcement is item 5B library accessory structure that we were going to discuss in our regular meeting will not be heard. The library is going to go ahead with what they originally proposed and what was originally approved by the commission. So anybody who wanted to listen in on that, we will not be considering that tonight, or that's off the agenda. Let's start with the public hearing. 102 Park Street upon application, and I apologize as I mess up this name, Tamara Slupczynski, or Burn Pilates Authorized Agent for Caroline Realty LLC, owner for a site plan approval of section 44C1 and 4 through C9 to allow a change in use from retail to personal services for property in the business A-zone at 102 Park Street. Who's, who's here to present, please?
Tamara Slupczynski.
And Rob Malazi.
Thank you. Take it away, please.
Tamara, I'll start if you don't mind. Nice to see everyone. Happy summer. Tamara runs a business called Core Pilates. She is proposing to come into our existing building on Park Street, where the former Lamoir dress shop was in operation for 34 years. The town, as you know, and you folks were, were the main driver of it, has allowed for personal services businesses to come into the business A-zone. And therefore, when Tamara approached us, I knew that I could, you know, give her the ability to come in and present to you folks with her, you know, little design for what she wants to do interior wise and all that. But nothing has changed in my building. Everything remains the same. She's got to sign application before you, and anything else I can add about the building, I'm happy to do so. But I'll turn it over if you have questions for, for Tamara or for me.
John, you're on mute.
Tamara, did you want to speak?
Um, no, but I can answer any questions if you have any. I do have two other businesses in Connecticut, and, you know, we're hoping to try to expand, even though kind of a difficult time right now.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
On the, Ken Turner speaking, on the signage, I noticed that there is a logo as part of the sign.
We are, we are not going to have the logo on the sign. We're just going to have the yellow dot.
Maybe, Gene, you want to comment on that?
Well, I think we can probably leave with the yellow dot, but I don't think we needed the rest.
Okay, then as far as the dimensions, does this mean that the original dimensions on the drawing stand, or would you enlarge the sign if you remove the logo?
No, it would stay the same.
So if I understand correctly, you're saying there'll be a round circle that is the same dimension, same configuration that the logo, logo had?
Yes, and we potentially will remove that. I just, I wasn't sure what my designer wanted to do. I understand that you don't want the logo on the sign, which is fine, but the color is also kind of part of who we are and will recognize us with that color. So it's part of our brand, so it would be nice to be able to do it, but again, if it's an issue, we can have it removed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, would anyone in the public like to address this application? Lynn, let me know when you're comfortable that no one is trying to raise their hand.
I don't, I actually don't see any, oh, I don't see any hands raised.
John's raising.
There you go, John.
Yeah, hi, John Chris speaking. I was looking at the, I'd call it architectural drawing of really where the facilities inside the space will be placed. Just want to be sure I'm reading it right. So there will be two separate doors in, which we, the units are separated by a wall. I'd be happy to answer that. Rob Malazi, John, the building is like that presently. It was originally, this Christian Science Reading Room was in there years ago, and then they left, they left and the dress shop expanded, and that's how they expanded. So that configuration stays the same. The wall stays the same, but there are two doors. They were utilized by the dress shop. I expect them to be utilized by Tamara's business too, but there, there's no change in that, that's existing.
So the, what appears to be a solid dividing wall between separating two distinct retail units, there are passageways through that wall?
Yes, yes, existing.
And they will remain?
Yes.
Okay, and the, by the two doors, the first, how many feet will be allocated to retail?
Whatever your regulations suggest, and I'll let Tamara answer that, but you know, the, there will be a retail component. It will reflect exactly what you folks want in terms of square footage. I don't have it in front of me, and of course, be up front so that when you pass the windows, you see that as the, the face of the business, which is, I think, a great idea. But Tamara, maybe you know the exact square footage. I don't, I don't know that.
I believe that it was 20%.
Yeah, I forgot what it was. You folks might know. But John, to answer your question, it'll certainly be exactly as you folks want and as prescribed.
Also, if I'm reading this correctly, there will be some sort of screening between the front retail area and the various.
Yes, so that, that is actually going to be just a shelving unit that will divide the room so that you don't really see into the space where people will be working out.
And final question, the big black rectangle is what?
The other space. It's not ours.
Ah, so that's somebody else?
Yes.
That's Berkshire Hathaway.
Okay. Got it. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Claire to Scornia. So it looks like you'll have four reformer machines, and on the other side will be more of a studio space?
Um, yes, we'd like to start with that many. Potentially, we might add a few more reformers, but to begin with, we'd like to start like that. That's usually how we open the studios, and depending on the demand, we'll add. The other side of the space will be used as a mat room and floorwork.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other commissioners? Lynn, we're good with the public?
I think so. I just chatted with all the ones that couldn't tell, and it looks like so far that, um, no one's here to speak on this matter.
Okay, great. In that case, this application's closed. Items number two and three, we will hear it together. Lynn, I know it's going to be tough on you, but I think the worst feedback we're getting is from your phone, so we need you to mute. Item number two, discussion and consideration of the request of Jacqueline Kaufman, Carmody Torrance Sandak Hennessy, authorized agent for Thomas San Severino, owner 81012 and 14 Houston Lane, and Lynn Corson, owner 16 Houston Lane, petition for change in zoning boundary pursuant to section 82D for properties currently in the B residence zone to the retail B zone for 8 Houston Lane, 10 Houston Lane, 12 Houston Lane, 14 Houston Lane, 16 Houston Lane, as well as Houston Lane. And item number three, 8 and 10 Houston Lane, upon application of Jacqueline Kaufman, Carmody Torrance Sandak Hennessy, authorized agent for Thomas San Severino, owner for a special permit and site plan approval sections 43, 43D1, 43D1D, 48C, 6H1, 82B, and 82A to permit a mixed-use development containing 12 residential dwelling units and approximately 315 square feet of commercial space with associated parking, landscaping, utility, and site improvement, and site improvements at a Houston Lane, as well as Houston Lane and the proposed retail B zone. Who's here to present, please?
I am here, Jackie Kaufman with Carmody Torrance. How are you tonight? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Here tonight on behalf of Thomas San Severino, owner of 81012 and 14 Houston Lane. Before I begin, I'd like to start by thanking the commission for the opportunity to open this hearing tonight, as opposed to at its June 23rd meeting. We appreciated that extra time because we had received some questions and comments from some of our neighbors leading up to the meeting, and we thought it best to use, use the last few weeks critically and to meet with those neighbors. They may be here tonight to review some of, some of their, their questions and concerns, but we can speak at that point about the progress we've made and discussions that we've had that are ongoing. So any opportunity we get to work with our neighbors ahead of coming to you is time well spent. So thank you. So thank you very much for accommodating us. I'd also like to thank your zoning staff and other supporting municipal staff in the departments. They have been completely available to us as an applicant. They've remained tremendously flexible in assisting us with receiving information, responding to information, posting everything on the website and just giving all the extra attention that COVID applications, as we now call them, require under the executive orders. And they did it as if it was effortless. And we do this in a lot of communities. And I'll tell you, it's not always effortless. So I want to thank them as well. The, applications before you, you'll see in a moment, we have modified, one of our, we're here tonight for a zoning map amendment and also for site plan and special permit approval. We have modified that zoning map, and I'll show that to you shortly. But in doing so, because that map came in today under the executive orders, I think we should be keeping the hearing open. So we request that. We'd like to make our full presentation to you tonight and then leave this open if you agree so that others who have potentially not seen this until now have a chance to respond as necessary.
We will, we will leave it open.
Thank you. We also will use that time to confer with DPW. And we have, we have also made the same representation to our neighbors that may be with us here tonight, too. So with me tonight, we have a full, we have a full slate. Mr. San Severino is here. He is a resident of New Canaan, longtime resident of New Canaan. As I mentioned, the owner of the subject properties, as well as people on our development team. Lenny DeAndrea, our civil engineer of DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering. Mike Galante, our traffic engineer with Frederick P. Clark. Hart Estine Hanover. Ryan Salvatore, our architect of Ryan Salvatore Design. My associate Jake Klein and my colleague Mike Murray of Ivy Barnum and O'Meara. He presented the pre-application to you several months ago. And it was the encouraging feedback that the team then received that motivated Mr. San Severino to move forward with this multifamily and modest mixed-use proposal that is before you tonight. Certainly, and I did get to tune into your, to your six o'clock meeting, a diversity of housing options in the downtown area is identified both in the town plan as a priority and by you as a commission. I've been following along for the past few, few meetings, listening to you talk about it. And I think it's terrific goals. And the goal of this immediate proposal before you is to bring new, attractive, 12-unit, modestly-sized and priced rental products to the downtown. And we think it's, we really think it's a win, and we hope that you do, too. Number one, it revitalizes a neglected corner with non-conforming. It's a self-contained pocket on the edge of the downtown, very much within walking distance of the downtown. Two, it delivers a really attractive and sustainable building, which contributes to the architectural prominence within the downtown. And we hope that you consider that to be a consistent look with the downtown Duquesne and look and feel. And three, it provides a housing option that's affordable and attractive, both to young people and to seniors. To do so, we've proposed a zoning map change and site plan and special permit requests. But before I go into those details, I'd like to orient you to the property. Lynn, would you please copy the presentation up for me?
Yep, and Jackie, I could only, it's the, it's not your revised presentation. We couldn't upload it in time. So it's just the previous one, okay?
That's fine. So the only thing then that you won't, that you won't see here are some, some pictures to orient you to the property that, that were added today, but also, you know, revised dates and then the revised map that I just mentioned. But I think we can talk through it pretty easily. If we can go to slide one?
Yeah.
Or slide two? Which is the aerial?
Yeah, sorry, I'm having like an unstated action right now.
That's okay, take, take your time. Okay, perfect. So you can see here that Houston Lane, we have a star on it. It's a private road located off of Heritage Hill, almost at the intersection of Lopez Avenue, consisting of five lots located in the residential B zone. The star itself, I keep pointing to the screen. It's, there we go. We can, nope, if you can stay, stay with this one. Actually, let's go to slide three, please. You can see here, this, nope, let's stick with slide three, with the green star, please.
There you go.
Perfect. You can see here that, that green star is right in between number eight and number 12. Mr. San Severino owns number eight, number 10, 12, and 14. Lot 16 is owned by Ms. Corson. These lots, the four lots owned by Mr. San Severino are improved with 11 units. Two traditional homes that you see when you drive by with the, the yellow and a, and a green home, and two multifamily buildings, which are legal non-conforming. And then 16 Houston Lane is a single-family dwelling. And they are all accessed off of Houston Lane, which is a private road off of Heritage Hill. The properties are boarded to the north and west by residential uses, office uses, and condominiums, primarily in the residential B and apartment zone. And to the east, by residential B, single and multifamily uses. And to the south, by retail B, namely the town municipal parking lot. You can see that represented in the big white below. And if you can go back up one more time to slide two for me, please, Lynn. And you can see the picture of these uses around. So if we are cruising through the next several pages, we have that were updated today, but after 3:30, included property photos. And we'll get those to you. But hopefully, many of you have been to the site and are familiar with the site. So let's go to our next slide, please. Hard to see on here, but I know you have the plans before you. We have the existing conditions map.
One second.
This is hard to see. I think it's a little easier with the aerial. But here's our existing conditions map here. Shows the five properties and the improvements.
Let me see if I can make it bigger.
That's okay. The proposed, the proposed zoning map change is the next, the next map in the sequence. And what we've done is we have removed lot 16, just Ms. Corson's single-family home from, from that map. We've, Mr. San Severino has met with her extensively. And she is supportive of the proposal to redevelop and improve the properties, but is, is not, does not want to see her property rezoned at this time. You can stick with the zoning map, Lynn. I'm about to get that, it's no problem. So that has, that has been revised today. But we've cut that out now. So the zoning, the zoning map itself is inclusive of the road and the four properties. So looking at that, let's stick with the zone, with the, with the big zoning map first, Lynn. That's terrific, thank you. The retail B zone was carefully selected. I have never had my phone ring at the office during a hearing. Sorry about that. And it's an interesting area because as you can see from this map, it represents a confluence of zones. The apartment zone, res B zone, retail B, multifamily at the periphery. And then even beyond that, the density starts to relax with half-acre zoning. So there were many opportunities here. And most immediately, on the northerly side of Locust, we've seen a really nice regeneration of mixed uses. The post office building's been very successful. New flats and townhouses at the corner with mixed uses. And then further south of that, and east, infill development, really wonderful new, new housing and mixed uses. Two to three mixed-story buildings, mixed uses. They've integrated really well. And I think speaks well for what is successful in the downtown and what people are looking for. And certainly, a lot of that new development has all been consistent with the town plan of development. And given that natural connectivity of the zoning map is an underlying requirement for, for a zone change, we zoned in, no pun intended, and on the apartment zone and the retail B zone as options. Those were the leading choices. And in reviewing the POCD, those certainly are supported. In the application, your application materials, we go into, into detail, into great length about the, the compatibility with the town plan and specifically make page references to it. So I would like to, to go over those briefly with you, but I won't, I won't regurgitate them. But really, it talks about growth and change very early out of the, in the plan. Growth and change are most likely to occur in downtown from redevelopment of existing properties. Think of Mark Twain, saying they're not making more of it. But it's, it's really, really the only option. And there are several references in the, in the early pages to the age, the age composition in town changing and that development needs to adapt to those same, those same projections. Specifically, it says the planning and zoning commission should continue to regularly review the regulations for the downtown area to ensure they're meeting community needs and expectations. So to that end, when we look at this property, I think that we see that it really has, it is underutilized. And there are so many great options that can, that can meet some of these goals, this being one of them. That there is a direct need for a mix of moderate-density developments in and near the downtown area. We would absolutely say that, you know, with our Phase 1 at, at 12 units, that that would meet minimum. It goes on in 38, page 38 and page 66 to talking about the needs for providing diverse housing portfolios, and specifically in the downtown. During your meeting earlier tonight, I think that you were zoning in on many of these strategies. But they're looking, your plan looks specifically for additional housing opportunities in and near the downtown, including multifamily housing, multifamily, senior-friendly housing, mixed-use rental housing for younger persons. And that's exactly what this product aims to achieve and will be. We really think that this zone change supports the goals. It really creates an opportunity for development that appeals to many different, different people. Empty nesters, young professionals. Allows for a desirable multi-story, moderate-density. One of the, one of the reasons why this zone, also not only for the connectivity, but from a massing perspective, was so attractive to this team, particularly to, to Mr. San Severino, is because it is, the retail B and the res B and massing requirements, particularly with regard to height, are consistent. And we aren't looking to exercise any special exceptions that would trigger any additional height or coverage. This will work within the same massing schedule that the zoning regulations provide under retail B. But also, that same size building could be built, obviously with less density. But the massing of a building could be achieved in this very similar manner, if not an identical manner, under the retail B. So there's some consistency, I think, that we can expect from the way that this, this property would be developed under both what's existing and what's proposed. It allows for some increased density to promote this new desired development pattern and supports economic development. The, given the density and diversity, right, that this plan supports and seeks, and given that in 12 units for Phase 1, and we can talk a little bit to, to what our Phase 2 looks like. We've had many neighbors ask us, what does Phase 2 look like? And that's why we spent a little bit of time putting together a plan that projects up to 20 units in Phase 2. But the retail B zone seemed to present the best options. The apartment zone is limiting for, for many reasons, certainly from a density perspective, but even, even really from a massing perspective. There are, this is a very unique property. When you drive down the driveway, you have, the lengths and the sizes of these properties are, are not, not traditional. And it, and the grade is also changes, the grade changes dramatically. So there are challenges that you have from, from the side. And I think what you'll hear from, from Ryan in a few minutes was the challenge of designing a building that essentially had, had multiple fronts because of the way it's perceived from both from Houston Lane and also from, from Forest Street or from, even from Locust Street because of the exposure. So great detail and tension went into that. But the apartment zone has, has many limiting features with the, setbacks, landscape area at 50%. And with some of the challenges that this, this hamlet, I like, I keep calling it, presents is that it just doesn't, didn't really lend itself to a very reasonable development plan. The retail B zone, unlike other residential zones, only permits a multifamily residential use in connection with some type of commercial use, be that retail or office. And there is no formula or minimum for determining what that is. Given that the, we think that the best use for this site is a residential use, the proposal includes a limited commercial component on the ground floor that would serve as an office. This is important, limiting, that is important because the parking itself, both for residential and commercial uses, is really one of the most limiting zoning drivers that we have. I don't want to say, I don't mean limiting in a, in a negative way, but certainly is its own control measure. So the density is achieved by 1,500 square feet. So no dwelling unit shall contain more than 1,500 square feet. That's the max in the retail B zone. That would mean that on these two properties before you today would allow for 15 units. We're proposing 12. If it's better, it allows, that's what the parking is, that driving force, we could park that and allow for both of those uses to be parked. We also looked at that and did that same exercise for numbers 12 and 14. And again, we arrived, I think we, we had a greater number than 20, I think several units more. But once we design a reasonably-sized unit, create, create parking circulation, 20 seemed to be, 20 seemed to be the right number. And certainly, we don't have a design plan in front of you, but did a simple, a simple massing plan for the exercise of speaking with our, our neighbors and with, with the commission tonight about it. And as those plans are refined and engineering is introduced, we may even see that, that produces a decreased or decreased number of units in the future. But 20 seemed to be the, the most reasonable number when we crunched it and did that exercise. The added benefit of this zone change, too, is that it brings the multifamily buildings on number 10 and 12, I'm sorry, 12 and 14, into compliance, albeit temporarily, because the, the density would be supported by the, the retail B zone here. The first, let's, if we can come down a little, let's go to the next, the next map, please, Lynn. Just so we can get a little bit closer. You can see the lime green at the top. This, before I was showing you the, the full zoning map, which has the gray for your downtown core represented. And this is the downtown core. Lynn is pointing to the, the retail B here. And then just above it is, is our Houston Lane areas that we are proposing to be added. So if we go to our next, we'll zoom in even further here. And you can see here, green is the retail B. Around it, we see our residential B. And then in the gold color to the north and the west is the apartment zone. And if we go down to the next slide, you can see we've extended the green up. Again, the, if you can point to number 16, Lynn, that's being removed. That will, that will remain as purple now. And so we are proposing four properties around that. And then that purple and the res B will remain connected to the res B and maintain that connectivity that's required. So if we can continue down to our site photos, but those didn't make it in. We are going to, I'll transition now into our site plan. The first phase includes, as I mentioned, the redevelopment of 8 and 10 Houston Lane only. Lane only. We would remove the two existing wood framed dwellings and replace them with this building that you see before you, a new multifamily building, a total of twelve units, and a small ground floor commercial space that is located to the north in the corner. Covered parking is located behind and below. Do you mind going to the next slide for me, please, Lynn? Thank you. Covered parking is, is located behind and below. This image is taken from the municipal parking lot looking northwest. New landscaping is proposed throughout. There's a special emphasis on the perimeter landscaping. The parcels themselves are roughly twenty-four hundred square feet and, including Houston Lane, which represents another fifty-two hundred square feet. So this building is a two and a half story building. It's for, the commercial spaces I mentioned, three hundred and fifteen square feet. Six units will be located on the ground floor, one one bedroom and five two bedroom, and six two bedroom units will be located on the second floor. An entry to the building is provided in both the front and the rear. Let's go down to the landscape plan for me, please, just because that gives us a nice overview of, of the site. You can see the intention is to green all the way around and to create some connectivity between the front of the building and up through the sidewalk. There will be a raised, a dual staircase raising us up because as, if you approach this site, as you know, Heritage Hill drastic, there's a drastic decline. So when you are standing up at the sidewalk today, you look down on the existing buildings and you will continue to look down because there's probably about a, you know, twelve, a twelve foot drop in points here, although it's landscaped and there are many retaining walls and things that, that make it feel less dramatic. The property is accessible only through Houston Lane, and sixteen Houston Lane will remain using this access point as well. If you come in today, the existing conditions are you will come down a driveway, you'll take a right, and there's a circulator, and that takes you to the other outbuildings as well as number sixteen. A, a similar, that will remain, there will be no changes to that until phase two, but there will be that maintained circulation for all of the sites. And what you will do, if you park here, is you'll come down the driveway, you'll take a right, and you'll take another right, and behind the building, and the parking has been tucked against the municipal parking, which seemed to make the most sense, and then under the building, and then you'll proceed up to the building. The use requires twenty-six spaces, two for the commercial use, which are located right off of, right off of Houston up at the top. Lynn, can you just point to that, that spot for me? Thank you so much. Right, right there at the two parking spaces, right off of the road, to the left, to the west, nope, to the west? The other, other way? If you go into the top of the driveway with your cursor? Nope, nope, like out to Heritage Hill. All right, there we go. There's two parking spaces right there. There's a parking platform there that exists today, so that will, that will remain. And the remaining residential parking, as I mentioned, is located behind and beneath. A loading space is provided, and everything else to this regard is satisfied. There are detailed landscape plans. You can see the different species that are proposed and the quantities as well, and there has been special emphasis paid to the perimeter landscaping, especially in and around our existing and neighbors that will be maintained. Talked about landscaping again with our, with our neighbors to the west and to the north, there is a, an ample buffer between the condos to the north and number ten, number twelve and fourteen, others say wetland there, and that will obviously be respected and remain. And, and then we've talked about other landscaping options, just to ensure that as much screening as possible is provided. The, to enable the proposal, we have a few special permits that we're requesting, specifically section four, three D one, which are the uses requiring special permits. They require the special permit simply to allow a mixed use, this mixed use development within this zone, assuming that you agree to, to land this zone here. As I mentioned, fifteen residential units could be achieved under the, the calculation and the regulations, and twelve are proposed. They range from nine hundred and fifteen square feet to one thousand one hundred and ten square feet, and that's in compliance with four, three, D one, the F C. We also propose a front yard setback of five feet to be located along the building line. Lynn, do you mind going back? If you could just take your, where the curve, you can stay on the landscape plan, it's just as easy to see, but if you can take your, up to the curve where you bend down in the driveway, right there, and take, go to, go to the right where the little bump out is of the window at the corner of the building at the driveway. Nope, the other side, right there. Thank you. We're proposing here that the front yard setback of five feet be relocated to the building line, which in this case is also a property line at that pinch point. The commission is permitted under these regulations to alter layout requirements and reduce front yard setbacks to a building line by special permit, when there are special and unusual features about the property. Houston Lane, if we go back to, as I talk about this, Lynn, if you don't mind, up to, to Bob's plan, to the site plan. Houston Lane's a private road and it provides exclusive access to this property. So really, it acts as a private driveway into the property, into all of the Houston Lane properties. And the width of the roadbed between the property line and Heritage Hill, you can see there's some, we have the roadbed itself, they're just separate parcels. So they, they are not, they're not merged, they're separate parcels. And then we have even additional property that is owned both by the condos, this small tail, and also property that's owned by the town, before you actually even get out to the sidewalk. So the front yard setback here is, is different on paper than it is in, in reality. So visually, what you are perceiving from the road and from the sidewalk is far greater than what you see on paper. So it really won't have a negative impact on the development, and the building does stay far, you know, far away from, from the street, as is the intention of this regulation. The grade change that's present on this property too also acts as a natural separation between the building and the sidewalk. So there would never be any reason why this building would, would ever get closer, and certainly that's not developable land between this, between the sidewalk and the building because it serves as the accessway. Also factors shape and topography. The property here is an L shape. You can see, if you're looking more closely at your own plans, the, the L shape restricts the size and reasonable location for where we can actually put the building. And it, it's even hard to take it back even further from that point because of the grading. So we still need to also deliver the required circulation patterns and create an opportunity that's passable for emergency vehicles. So we're, that was also a very limiting feature here in the topo to this, and the grade change also created that type of challenge. Further, the density and layout of the existing neighboring uses. We obviously own two of the three neighboring uses. He intends to redevelop those properties in a complementary manner to create a consistent and compatible community around there. So there is, we don't think that will have a negative impact either. And if you were to travel down that way today, you would notice that the greenhouse, blue house is also located right at that quarter and in advance of the setback. So there really is no change to conditions. I will say though, one of the other challenges too is that we also had to widen the driveway to accommodate, to accommodate fire trucks. So, and therefore, another challenge that we think would meet your special permit criteria. And finally, is the official designation of infrastructure improvements or reconfigurations, which could otherwise negatively affect residential use. There is a ten foot wide sanitary sewer easement, which runs through the rear of the property. When I say rear, it just kind of goes straight down the middle, through the driveway and parking lot. That's not being used right now, or to our knowledge. I don't know what, what it's for, and don't, I don't have any, any good information on that for you. But if, in the event that that sanitary sewer area needed to be accessed, we would certainly not want to have a building over it. You can see it represented with the, with the dashes. We need to maintain some accessibility to that too. And that also contributed up, and it's the one that goes down, Lynn, straight down, up and down vertically on the property, you can see it up there. So we were discouraged from moving the building, you know, back in that direction too. And finally, we're asking for a special exception, exception of six, permit of six H one. This allows the commission to reduce landscape standards under section six, where other adequate landscape treatment is provided. Lynn, would you please go to the landscape plan for me? So what we're doing here is, the applicant proposes a continuous row of eleven parking spaces at the southerly perimeter of the property in, in lieu of, you're allowed to have ten parking spaces in a row, and when you exceed that, you are asked to put some type of landscaping treatment in between the tenth and eleventh space. But certainly that is, is very challenging to do here. One of our goals is to keep parking as far away from other non-commercial or non-retail B neighbors as possible. So you can see that we have, you know, done that, we've not put, even though you have asphalt, there is no parking up against number sixteen, and the, there is an extensive buffer that has been maintained. It really just looks like white behind there, but you can see that the tail of the property behind that tree row is being maintained out of respect for the, and a courtesy for the neighbor that is to the east. And so therefore, we are asking for a continuous row of eleven spaces in lieu of just ten, and we're putting significant landscaping in all around that and on the side. So we still maintain all the required landscaping, but we wouldn't have an island in between the tenth and eleventh space. If we did that, it would just push the asphalt and parking further east. We believe that, I have a special permit application within, summary within the materials that you can read and that I can speak to, but we believe that we meet all of the article eight, section eight, two, B four criteria, and I've set forth all the following, the specific reasons that I direct you, please, to that, but happy to speak to those details if you have questions. I'd like to turn it over at this point to our consultants to give you a little more detail about the building and engineering plan. Ryan?
Thanks, Jackie. Hi, everyone, Ryan Salvatore, Ryan Salvatore Design. Lynn, would you mind putting up the rendering of the front elevation, please? Jackie has, has clearly provided an overview of what the building is comprised of from a programmatic standpoint. I thought I might just speak briefly about what some of our design objectives were, and then talk more specifically about strategies that we use around the building to achieve some of those. I think the first thing to point out is we wanted to do something that would look like it is really a part of New Canaan. This is not a foreign object. This is something that is intended to look like it belongs here and in fact has been here. And I, I think it's important to note that the building is on this sort of border between what is the downtown to the south and what are obviously much more residential areas to the north. And so just even in the selection of the material palette, we tried to be sensitive of that and use materials that one sees throughout the town. So for example, the brick is a common material that one sees throughout the downtown, but we're not proposing a brick building, we're proposing that we sprinkle the brick in so that you get a taste of it, but it's really complemented by what is otherwise a wood shingled building. I think it's also important, Jackie mentioned the grade changes at the, at one of the lower points, so the grade, as you can imagine, on Heritage Hill, the grade is shooting up as one travels from south to north. So this site, the, the grade difference from east to west is exacerbated as you move north along the site. And at the, just by the driveway from Heritage Hill, we have a seventeen foot grade difference. That's a pretty substantial challenge, but it's also an opportunity because it permits us to tuck the garage underneath or parking underneath in the form of a garage. And that means not only is it screened from the site, but obviously offers an amenity to the residents there, who, many of whom we imagine might be people downsizing from elsewhere in town who are accustomed, frankly, in a suburban environment to having a garage space. And so we want to be mindful of that. The other thing that obviously that type of grade change does is it inherently creates a more massive building from one side because you have one additional story. In, in this case, it's seventeen feet, it's really more than one story. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the strategies we use to try to break down the scale of the building. Another thing I want to mention is that the conception of this building with this passageway through it is really one that tries to be more of a link than a bar. I mean, despite the fact that we have the seventeen foot grade difference. And what is, I think if you were to drive by now, you might classify it as a little bit of an imposing site. We're trying to make it feel a little bit more inviting. And so what I imagine is people are using that walkway, using the steps that come up to the street and really engaging the sort of, what I might classify as new urbanist style of living so close to, to the, to the core of downtown New Canaan. The principal precedent that we look to on the project, some of you may remember this from our pre-application, is McKimme and White's Newport Casino from eighteen eighty on Bellevue Avenue in Newport, now serves as the tennis hall of fame. Really took a lot of our stylistic and architectural cues from that building as we developed the scheme from the last time you've seen it. I, I will sort of skip over some of the details on what is inside the building because I think Jackie covered them, would be happy to answer questions you might have about them. And I think right now, probably is best to turn to, talk a little bit more clearly about some of the, the strategies we use to break down the scale of the building. Lynn, if you wouldn't mind going to what I think is the final page of the presentation, where we show the material palette. If not, we could probably just go to the, just stay on that front or rear rendering, either one is fine. So as you can imagine, I, I said earlier that one of the, that the kind of starting points was thinking about people living in town, or excuse me, living in New Canaan already who might want to downsize. And one of the principal considerations there was to do single story living here. So all of the units in this building are on one floor, they're all served by a common elevator in the core of the building that goes all the way down to the parking garage. And as a result, the building form is one building, it's an apartment building, let's say, as opposed to townhouses that you might see proximal to this. And so that, from an architectural standpoint, presents somewhat of a challenge because we have one larger building rather than several smaller buildings. Well, we approach that as an opportunity to really think about texture around the building, material selections around the building. So that's one of the main reasons why we have used the brick veneer in selective places, why we've used lattice or lattice on top of solid boards so that you get a little shadow in there and a little differentiation in the texture of the building. You'll see in a couple of areas on the east elevation and on the north elevation where we've tried to make the building look as if there were a porch that had been enclosed over time, again, lending almost an immediate patina to it, but also the idea that this is something that has been here forever and kind of grown and, and accreted over time. Another main thing that, a main strategy that we used was ensuring that eaves were as low as possible to the ground. So instead of looking, when you look at the, in fact, the, the elevation that you see or the view that you see of the building, although it's a three story facade, it never appears to be a flat three story elevation. We break it up with whether it's bands of freezeboards and wood trim or an eve that runs around, and so the, the third story really appears as dormers coming out of the roof. The same strategy is employed on the east side of the building, again, entirely designed to break down the massing and the scale of the building and make it feel a little bit more intimate. And the last thing that I would point out is if you go back, Lynn, if you wouldn't mind going back to the front view, at the northeast corner, and you sort of see it on the left side of the rendering, but it's also, I think, probably more clearly visible in the elevations that were part of the submission. that were part of the submission package. We've proposed a pretty modest tower element there. That's the area where the grade differential between the first floor of the building and Heritage Hill is the greatest, meaning the least amount of the building is really exposed. But it's also the part of the building that you see as you travel south on Heritage Hill coming into town. And so we thought, wouldn't it be nice to have a really nice marker here on the building? And so the tower is not terribly tall. It projects maybe two and a half or three feet above the eve line along the east side of the building. But it is a subtle marker and a kind of announcement that you're approaching town. And we think a really nice architectural element on the elevations. So I will leave it at that. And I think Jackie, turn it back to you. But obviously, happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Ronnie, would you like to speak next to some of the site design?
Talking a little bit about the drainage, I'll keep it brief because you have a good town engineer who's reviewed the project, has a few comments that we certainly intend to address before the next hearing. But basically, we have a house, excuse me, a site that drops down as has been explained. And there is no real formal drainage system on it now or water quality. Yet we do have a pretty good-sized culvert running through the property at the very tell-end to the east so that we have an opportunity to connect what we collect and manage into a system that runs through the easterly end. So what we're doing here is going to be a fairly dramatic improvement to the property of glowing number 16. And we'll get infiltration, which is encouraged. And then we'll get a reduction in all storms for both the peak and the volume, which is always a positive thing. So other than addressing some of the comments, which of course are very good from the town engineer, we're going to make an improvement over the water quality of existing conditions for the site presently.
Thank you. Aaron. Mike, are you here with us as well? Michael Ante?
I'm here and I'm ready.
Thank you. Would you please speak to some of the traffic conditions that you've?
Sure. Lynn, if you can go down to the traffic section, we'll start out with the company name and traffic summary title sheet, just so for reference purposes. And I'll just wait a second so you can catch up.
So I have Jackie's PowerPoint up. I can put on your stuff.
Okay.
You go down.
Should be towards the end, up there, I think.
I think they were added, Lynn, with what was, what you had, if not. It should be the last slide.
I can certainly talk without it if I need to.
Okay.
Your traffic stuff because it's not on this.
Okay, we'll speak to it then.
Okay.
I have, I can put your traffic report. That's not a problem.
Well, I'll just reference, because everything I would have shown is in the traffic reports. There's nothing new. You'll just have the opportunity just to look at me tonight. I'm Mike Launty from Pausian Hanover. And just for reference, the Frederick Clark name is the name you know me by. That name will actually be retired at the end of this year after 71 years. But the work will continue. We have a report that's dated April of this year. That is a traffic report that analyzes the traffic conditions at the driveway itself at Heritage Hill Road. And I'll just run through some of the numbers just as a summary and overview. We actually did a field inventory of the roadway conditions, driveway itself, which is a private drive, Heritage Hill Road, which is a town road. It's a road that's about 40 feet wide. Has, well, there you go, keep going. Go to figure two. One more. There we go, perfect, perfect. Actually, I'm clearer picture. This is just a summary of existing conditions out in the field, street measurements, parking regulations along Heritage Hill Road, which is basically no parking in the vicinity of the site driveway, if you will. The blue line shows that there's a sidewalk along both sides. There are curbs. There's a double yellow center line. And I know the pavement markers are not there at the moment because the road was repaved not too long ago. As mentioned, driveway is a private drive. It serves the site itself. Site where it says site on the sheet there. There are two family homes that will be removed. And then you'll have a 12-unit building constructed on that site. So what we've done, what we did, you can just go another, maybe to figure three. You can stop, that's right, figure three is fine. That's okay, keep going. We actually did traffic counts, oops, not too far. That's good. We actually did traffic counts in February before the virus hit. So these are actual traffic volumes out in the fields, conducted at this intersection. We observed any pedestrian activity. We counted the volume at this driveway, if you will, by movements. We identified the peak hours. Typical weekday morning, the peak was 7:15, 8:15 a.m. And the afternoon peak was 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. Look at the volumes themselves on this road. Heritage Road had about, Heritage Hill Road had a volume of about 300 to 400 vehicles. That's a two-way volume during the morning and afternoon peak hours. The driveway itself had a very low volume, about three vehicles during both the morning and the afternoon. The next step, if you could go to figure, table three, we collected accident data from the New Canaan Police Department. And not to be funny or anything, but it showed no accidents recorded at our driveway in Heritage Hill Road for the three-year period between 2017 and 2019. We typically request and are required to look at a three-year period, look at the accident data. And of course, if the accident data shows any issues as far as a high accident number or a specific type of accident, we would address that, have that discussion with the town engineer, DPW, and as necessary, the police department itself. So we collected this data and included in the report. Lynn, you can go, just scroll down, keep going. You can stop right here. We projected our traffic from a 2020 design year or baseline traffic condition. And we expanded the volume by 0.9%, or just about 1% per year as normal growth. And this is from the Connecticut Department of Transportation. And it's a growth rate we obtained. And they have it for each town in Connecticut. And we use that growth rate to account for general traffic conditions. Interestingly enough, we looked at the traffic study conducted for the Locust Avenue Parking Deck, which was completed in 2012. And the volume on Heritage Hill Road was identical in the afternoon peak hour. And the peak hour time period was, I think, believed actually the same time period. So traffic really hasn't changed that much. Some people may disagree with that. In some cases, traffic increased and stays as traffic volumes have gone down. But we look at a 2024 condition as far as a future design year as far as analyzing the 12 units built on the subject property and analyze how that driveway, in this case, at Heritage Hill Road, would operate. Lynn, you can go down. Keep going to the next table. Right here, that's good. Table three is just symbian, but a reference to existing traffic volumes on the subject properties for a total of four units and two buildings using trip generation rates from ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So it would be consistent. Those two buildings, if you will, would generate two to three trips during a peak hour, morning and afternoon, afternoon being slightly higher. The proposal for 12 units to replace the four units will result in traffic generation of six trips during the morning peak hour and nine during the afternoon. And typically, you know, residents are leaving in the morning to go to work and residents are home at the end of day after work or wherever they might be. So the patterns would show that. The net, don't go yet. There's a commercial component in this of 315 square feet, which we believe will be probably a leasing office for this building. And would generate probably one trip, maybe even both peak hours, but certainly during the afternoon peak hour. So overall, we're generating six to 10 trips, if you will, in general from this new development. But since we're removing some units and traffic related to the existing units, we look at a net change or net increase in traffic, which is four trips in the morning and seven trips in the afternoon. We analyze this, we add this traffic to the roadway system. And Lynn, probably go to the next figure. We estimate traffic patterns for the new traffic on area roads and specifically the Heritage Hill Road. And some may wonder, why do we just focus on this one intersection? Mainly because of the old volume and the proper system. And that's why we just focused on this intersection as far as existing and future traffic condition. Based on the patterns of traffic on Heritage Hill Road, we're estimating about 80% of the traffic. Most of the traffic would travel towards Main Street, towards the downtown business district and beyond. And that's, and that's how we actually add the traffic to the roadway system. And I'm not going to run through the other figures, but we add this traffic to the no build traffic condition for 2024. And we developed what we call build traffic lines, which are included in the report. And we analyze this intersection of the driveway and Heritage Hill Road under existing condition, a no build condition and a build condition. And there's a table here that it's going to be sideways, so no sense in showing it. But you keep running through. Just a little more, keep going. But there you go. That's, it's not sideways, terrific. This is just really a summary of the analysis of this one intersection. It's a stop sign control or really an uncontrolled intersection that functions as a stop sign control intersection. And we analyze the conditions before and after. Now, I will acknowledge and has been mentioned by some residents in the area that, you know, Heritage Hill Road backs up in the morning for when most are traveling southbound towards the Main Street-Singler's intersection. And we saw some of that during the morning peak hour in our traffic counts. And we acknowledge that. The analysis of this intersection, which I call the driveway, as serving this site and eventually a phase two, if there is a phase two, which we'll discuss in a minute. It essentially shows that this intersection, which is a T-intersection, operates with minimal delay. And it's important to note, the driveway has a very low volume of traffic before and after, even when we add the net increase in traffic. In our analysis, I believe we just added the new traffic on top of the existing traffic. We didn't take any credit for what's there today because it's actually a very low volume. But in the end, we look at this driveway and we decide, well, how should it operate? Well, it's not an intersection for a traffic signal, of course. So it's a stop sign controlled intersection. We recommend that we actually install a stop sign, actually install a stop bar. We would certainly provide the sightlines that are needed at the intersection, which are essential to there today. I only mention that because any future landscaping in that strip of land that we were talking about a few minutes ago, we would maintain that as a low-level landscaping plan so we can see over that planting plan, if you will, knocked down on Heritage Hill Road. I guess we could touch base on a potential phase two, which could have 20 units. We haven't done a full analysis of that. But we do know that 20 units will replace 11 units. And there will be a net increase or net change in traffic, certainly because you have more units. And generally speaking, we would have a net increase of traffic on this driveway and this intersection of seven vehicles during the morning and the afternoon peak hour. The afternoon is the higher volume. The morning would actually be something less than seven vehicles. So all in all, a phase one and a phase two can be accommodated with this driveway with the improvements that were mentioned, the widening of the driveway, the landscaping that's not blocking any sightlines and maintaining a more formal stop sign control at this T-intersection. And that's a summary of a traffic report that we provided for this analysis to determine potential impacts and need for any mitigation. And the mitigation is really limited to the driveway and traffic control to more formalize it as opposed to have it as an uncontrolled T-intersection. And I can certainly answer questions now or later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
An image that we have shared with our neighbors that, and that we had intended to share with you, was a, is a site plan that shows what that 20 units look like. It's, they're not elevation, it's a very, very preliminary. It shows how that circulation, where the parking, well, again, has been in parking. It's passages under the building. But we have put pencil to paper in this regard so that we've had something concrete to discuss. So we'll be sure that you have a copy of that as well for your consideration as you, because they're both applications. I also wanted to take a moment, too, to speak to, there were some letters that came into the record about the, about the buildings being historic, particularly number eight and 10. And I provided a memo earlier today, which hopefully you've received, which outlines the research that we did. It's not on the state registry. It's not on the, the buildings are not on the national registry. And we did our due diligence prior to filing these applications and confirmed that it was not within a historic overlay zone. It was not in any protective registry within the town as well. And we reviewed the files that were, well, we conferred with the Historic Society. And we weren't, at the moment, we weren't allowed to go into the Historic Society. But I did put something in the record to that as well. But before we continue, just want to pass this baton over to Mike Murray. If you have anything to add, Mike.
Thank you, thank you, Jackie. My name is Michael Murray. I'm an attorney who worked with Mr. San Saverino's team. My office is around the corner on Cherry Street from the, from the project. Lynn, would you mind putting up the site plan? And I don't think I'm going to add anything new, but I worked with Mr. San Saverino when we assembled the properties and with the team as we put together this application. And one of the things that Mr. San Saverino had us do, he always reminded us, is look, I live in New Canaan. I am very active in New Canaan. I coach in New Canaan. This needs to make sense. And with a lot of the expertise that Mr. San Saverino put together, I think that this project makes a lot of sense for the town. It'll certainly clean up that corner. As a former resident of Heritage Hill Road, I think it's fantastic. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have relative to the property or anything else.
Thank you. We have nothing further to add at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions for the applicant team? Mr. Chris? You're on mute. There you go.
John Chris speaking, just several questions. The lane is owned by whom? The private road?
Mike, would you like to answer that?
Sure. Right now, all the Houston properties have the right to use it. There seems to be a question about ownership going back decades in the chain of title. And we are in the process of sorting that out.
So who's responsible for maintaining it?
The, all the property owners on Houston Lane.
Is that a de facto situation or a jury situation?
No, it's, as you may recall, there's a, there's no formal maintenance agreement, which was very common in Connecticut for years. The state of Connecticut passed a law four to five years ago because there were so many of these situations where there wasn't a maintenance agreement, where they put, look, everybody pays their fair share. Anybody uses it. So that's the fallback right now.
Okay. Also, it's looking at parking. I couldn't find a handicap spot anywhere.
Ryan, would you like to answer that?
I'll take that. We have two, actually. One is inside the building. And then one is off the southeast corner of the building. On the outside. So you have one inside and one outside.
As I'm looking at, I guess, the elevations and I was looking for the handicap sign on one of the parking spots and couldn't find it. So inside the building, that's why I was stumped on that. They all seem to be the same striping width, too, so.
The, inside the building was in the north. Let's see if I can get this right here, north. I think it was in the northeast quarter. Ryan, is that where it is? Yeah. And then right here, where you're pointing with the cursor now, that's where it is on the outside, right?
What about the inside of the building?
Northeast corner.
The, if you can go, we have the floor plans, if you'd like to go to those specifically.
That's what I'm looking at, I, I couldn't see the handicapped spot.
Yeah.
It's right there.
Number three?
Yes.
We'll make sure that that's appropriately noted.
Okay, didn't have the mark, so, okay, fair enough.
That will actually be a van spot as well, that's a handicap space for a van.
Uh, okay, fair enough. Uh, is there going to be a lead certification or anything like that for the building?
Okay, there's no intent at this time to pursue lead certification.
Okay. Final question, I was looking at your planting, uh, plan, let me get that up. I queried a few of the, uh, plants by Latin name, for example, Sphoria, which is native to Eastern Asia, it's not New England. Also, Ilex, native to Western and Southeastern Europe, Northwest Africa and Southwest Asia, again, not Southern New England, and also Buxus, um, several hybrid types, uh, native to Western and Southern Europe, Northwest Africa, Southwest Asia, Southern England to Northern Morocco, and east to the Northern Mediterranean to Turkey. Our plant and conservation development, and I think our zoning rules strongly encourage native plantings, and I'm just not seeing a lot of that here. No blueberry bushes, no Joe Pie weed, no, uh, Mondara, other plants that are truly native to our area, no witch hazel, uh, that are native to our area, or, um, bird or pollinator friendly, so.
Well, we know our landscape architect tonight, but I'll be happy to pass that on and, uh, and modify the planting plan to be consistent with your suggestions and your regulations.
And just as a heads up, Ms. Kaufman, how we bring this up in every application I hear.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, those are all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, other commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to raise one.
Please proceed.
Actually, two-part question. The frequent references to the second phase two project, is there any shared infrastructure between phases one and two, which would diminish or prevent, uh, completion of phase one if phase two wasn't approved? And a second question, is there any intended accommodation for low-income housing as part of the fifteen units?
There are twelve, there are twelve units, to answer your second question, the, there are twelve units that are associated with, with the phase one building, and we have not discussed that. Tom, do you have? Not on that, but dedicating any affordability, any affordable units?
At this time, we haven't.
And as far as the shared infrastructure, we have not, uh, created a, a plan, uh, yet to be able to answer that question. So great question, certainly there are amenities that will be shared, but nothing that we can project now that wouldn't permit the completion of phase one. And we certainly would be back to you at the time when we are ready to move forward with phase two.
Uh, I, in the same line as, as John's earlier comment, the issue of adding additional units, particularly if two phases were done relative to the need to deal with incremental low-income housing would be an issue that I would also raise. Thank you.
We'll talk to you on that, thank you.
Krista Nielsen, my question is, Huston Lane seems like a odd remnant of a street from some time in the past, and I was wondering, you guys gave any consideration to abandoning that right away and just taking a straight right turn in off of Heritage Hill to just try and clean up what's sort of an odd situation currently?
Great question. Can I please have Lynn and, uh, and Mike respond to that? But I will tell you, if you're interested in the title history of where that came from, we have the old maps, and in fact, at some point, Houston Lane came off of, of the, off of Bain Street, and, uh, and that changed over time, I believe it was in the nineteen sixties that that change occurred. So I'm happy to share those, uh, maps with staff, just so you can see what the genesis of this, uh, of that driveway was, or that road is. And, uh, but from a cleanup engineering perspective, Lynn, do you have any thoughts? Mike?
I would talk first about just, um, the, the queuing, you know, we were trying to get a, a driveway, if we, if we did a driveway, we certainly want to keep it going across the front of the building, and we also need to worry about accessing the properties to the north. But a more direct connection of ninety degrees heading straight down the property to the east, it, it became just too steep. So what we're able to do with the configuration we have now is continue to be able to service any properties to the north existing or future, and then also allow us to gradually get back down to the, to the backside, the east side, where we can park it. Uh, I'll let, um, Mike talk about the intersection itself, but we have made improvements to that to, to make it more user-friendly with stop signs and the stop bar as well.
Yeah, Mike Galante, from a traffic perspective, and, and Lenny really answered the question, just such a great change between Heritage Hill and, and the lower level of the access drive behind the building, just can't create a ninety-degree intersection there, which would shift our driveway or its drive, intersection away from the Main Street intersection, which would have been desirable, just, but it's just not feasible.
Thank you, I figured that was the case.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, um, can we go back to, um, the discussion about lot sixteen? You're, um, you're asking us to approve, uh, this zoning change to, um, retail, and, uh, with the exception of lot sixteen, um, does the owner of that property, um, understand the impact that this would have on, on that piece of property? And, and could you maybe explain a little bit why, uh, that property isn't part of this, uh, change?
The, uh, Ms. Corson, who is the owner of the property, is on, so I will, if she is comfortable, I, I'll ask for her to speak for herself, she's nodding her head, I see her here. Uh, we actually have removed number sixteen, uh, from the change, and there was, I think, a miscommunication when we filed the application. That, I, I understand, and again, Ms. Corson, I'll let you speak, that the, uh, we understood, Mr. San Severino understood that, while she was supportive of the application that he was bringing, uh, we thought that included the support for her property to be changed as well. She would like to keep her property within the, within the res B zone and not in the retail zone, but, um, so that is where the modification that I mentioned earlier tonight came from, but, um, she's here with us as well tonight.
Is there?
Normally, um, we would exhaust the commissioner's question, so to speak, but, and then go to the public, but.
Okay.
Ms. Corson, if you would like to, uh, address this, uh, now, you're, you're free to.
Sure, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um, just to clarify to what Ms. Kaufman did say, yes, when I received this application, um, I did make indication that it shouldn't have been filed on, on my behalf, this is really Mr. San Severino's endeavor and, and not mine, so none of these requests were coming directly from me. My issue with, um, changing the zoning was not only my property, but I'll, I'll speak now, because this is what I would have said when you turned it over to the public, but it was in retail B, and that's what I was opposed to. Obviously, it's a residential area, and while I, I do support the current endeavor for phase one, for eight and ten, um, he shared these drawings with me and he did have my support, what I was opposed to was changing the whole lane to retail B, uh, because down the road, um, the future implications of that, you know, should phase P, phase B not come to fruition, should he decide to sell the property down the road? I would not want it to turn into a non-residential street and have, um, whatever kind of retail that, that could be suited for this, for this, um, you know, lane going to effect. That was my opposition. What my, you know, what my property is, is really not as big a bearing as what the rest of the lane is for twelve and fourteen in the future, if that clarifies my position.
Thank you.
John, just one other question. I wanted to, uh, compliment, um, the design, Mr. Salvatore, Salvatore, um, and the owner for, um, the efforts they put into, um, designing this building to respond to the site, uh, to reduce the density, the appearance of it. And, um, you know, I think they've done a very nice job of, uh, creating a, um, architectural fabric that will blend in very well and be respected by the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Ms. Kaufman, I, I'm probably the slow one in the group. Can you, I, I would like once again to, if, if we can bring up the best map, and actually what was interesting, it was one of Mr. Galante's, was one of the easiest, the satellite view was one of the easiest ones for me to compliment, but whatever you think is best, but, you know, what would be helpful to me is to maybe just take another shot at understanding where is phase one? Where is phase two? What is phase two projected to be? And where is Mrs. Corson, Ms. Corson's property?
Okay. I will, let's, let me see, uh, Lynn, if you don't mind going back, let's start with, why don't you go please to slide two? Oh, uh, okay, we see the site here, all right, then let's use this time. Uh, excuse my face getting very close to the screen, I, I can't, I can't help myself. All right, so you see the word site. Lynn has, right now, has her, uh, has her arrow on the large house to the south, that is number eight. Lynn, if you can go back to the word site with your cursor, please?
Wait, which one do you want me to go to, I'm sorry?
Oh, if you keep with this, if you keep with this, um.
One to the south.
There, you see the house to the south of the word site, that, that is number eight, that is part of phase one, and then please put your cursor over number ten, right there, that's part, that's the greenhouse, that is also part of, uh, phase one. Ms. Corson's house is to the east of that, right there, that will, and you can see there is a large paved, um, area with a green, uh, turnaround here, and that whole area in the back represents numbers twelve and fourteen, and that's part of phase two.
So you have no current plans for phase two, but what are you thinking about for phase?
Well, we have a conceptual, uh, site plan that, uh, didn't make it up to the screen here tonight, however, that plan shows, uh, the removal of those two buildings, and tucked into the back, um, there is a, a single building that includes roughly a three hundred square foot commercial space and twenty residential units comprised of, uh, Ryan, was it four, four townhomes?
I think that's right.
Four townhomes and the remainder, the remaining are flats, apartments. And, uh, that would be the maximum number that we could comfortably fit on the site, meet the parking requirements, meet the landscape requirements, but again, this is very conceptual. It, we would do not expect a plan to increase from there, if anything, it could decrease from there once we start to get into the refining, the, the refining stages of the, of development plan. And.
Sorry, go ahead.
We also, uh, you know, looked at this from, again, these are very crude back-of-napkin numbers, but knowing that Ms. Corson and others are concerned with how much commercial development could be here, we know that Mr. San Severino is dedicated to this property, but, uh, you know, if, if for some reason that happened and it was changed, how much commercial could be back here if someone didn't, um, didn't come in with a similar plan to that which, um, he's committed to? And it's not, it's not a lot, in fact, it's half the size of the building that's proposed in phase one, uh, and, and that's simply because the parking requirements for office use, medical office use and retail are so great that your area is completely gobbled up by, uh, by parking, excuse me, I want to grab, um, grab a plan here, you, this is not a great plan. Man, this is a plan. Talking about, this shows the massing, um, it's not a great way to share it with you, but phase, the area of, of the land for phase one is roughly twenty-four thousand square feet, and the area for phase two is roughly thirty-two thousand five hundred square feet, so it's a larger space which warrants a higher number of, of units by our calculation, but really, when we crunch the numbers, we really aren't looking at a building that's much bigger than fourteen thousand square feet if it was all commercial. And, uh, those parking ratios are just far too high, general office and retail parking is one space for every two hundred square feet on the ground floor and two hundred and seventy square feet on all other floors, so a general office or retail, um, development on its own, no residential proposed, require at least sixty spaces. And that just, it, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't fit back here. The medical office is even, um, higher, at one space per hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area, and that requires in excess of eighty-five spaces. Uh, so really, it is a very self, some of the, I guess I want to say, one, one supportive fact of this zone change is that there is a very, it's very self-limiting, and we call it the retail B zone, but retail B zone, when we look at the list, and it's, it's inclusive of so many different uses, in fact, it's including residential, resident, single-family residential is an as-of-right use, anything that is in, um, you know, the A zone, and there are, uh, over a dozen as-of-right uses you can have here, uh, and even more with special permits. So it's, I think it's, the, the title of the zone itself is a little misleading, it really is a mixed-use commercial zone, and it has only been applied, um, over and around the corner of Locust and along Forest Street, uh, but we think that it has, uh, appropriate measures and control measures that, uh, that make it, again, also appropriate for, for bringing up, um, and on to, onto this site. So the idea of having this become a viable commercial space, a self-sustaining strip mall, would be, um, is very unrealistic, and the, but the residential, um, density that is available under the res B zone with a, you know, a modest commercial component, provides a nice transition between the apartment zone to the north, the residential, uh, B zone to the east, and then, uh, you know, the more, uh, the more dense and diverse zones to the south. And I'd also mentioned too, the mass, the massing schedule, um, is, is consistent with retail B, the retail, I'm sorry, the retail B and res B massing schedules are very consistent, and we think that that is also a control mechanism that can give both the commission and neighbors comfort in the size of a building that would be delivered. Interestingly enough, in this zone, you do have the ability to go up to three stories provided you meet certain criteria, uh, and that's not something that, um, that interests the developer, that interests, you know, he wants to, uh, be respectful of the neighbors around him and build something that is comfortable, uh, and doesn't exceed what one's expectation would have been itself.
And, and I assume, uh, Mrs. Corson, to get to her, her house is going to use the redone Houston Lane, right?
That's correct.
Okay, will, will we be able to see that, um, phase two?
Yes.
Hypothetically?
Sorry, I didn't make it into, into the, uh, into, into this slide tonight, or will we, I know that, um, that it's there for you and you'll have it as of tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, and, and a, a question for Mr. Galante, and Mr. Galante, you, you did address it, but let's revisit it. I think when we, in addition to the neighbors having remarked about the backup at the Heritage Hill light, I, I think when, you probably know, we explored decking the Locust lot. and we explored having an ingress and or egress onto Heritage Hill. And there were concerns back then. Maybe you were even involved. I don't remember.
No, no, I wasn't. But I've, I've seen the report.
Yeah, so, so revisit one more time. You, this not contribute to the issues of that backup in the morning?
Well, let's just touch on the Locust Avenue deck, if you will, for a moment. The, the plan I saw, the concept anyhow, which, which was in a traffic report from 2012, uh, I believe has the concept of a driveway coming out of that upper deck, if you will, to Heritage Hill Road, somewhere south of our driveway. And the numbers that are shown in that traffic report, as far as the added traffic from that upper deck, parking was about 27 vehicles during a peak hour. It's, and I don't want to pick on anyone else's traffic study, but it's a, it's a difficult spot and, you know, obviously for the town. It's a difficult spot to come out with a driveway, but it's doable, but you may restrict that to right turn out and right turn in potentially. But I didn't analyze it, so I don't want to, you know, critique it too much. Our driveway, uh, has a lower volume, uh, and it's further away from the Heritage Hill Main Street intersection. But I do acknowledge, and we saw it a little bit, uh, I think some neighbors may have seen it back up a little bit more. But during the morning peak, uh, there is a queue, vehicle queue from the stop bar at, at Heritage Hill at Main that backs up to our driveway, uh, and there was concern that it blocks the driveway. The reason why I don't recommend, uh, in, in our case, a restriction of no left turnout was simply because the volume of traffic is quite low, uh, and it's, I forget the distance from the stop bar, uh, at Main Street. But in reality, you know, will someone still make a left turnout when there's a low volume, uh, side street? I think the answer is yes, and that's why we didn't suggest restricting it.
Okay.
But we did, but we did look at it.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners?
I, I have two quick questions for Ms. Kaufman. Is there any retail planned for phase two?
No, there, there is not a retail plan. There is a commercial component that's, that's consistent with what's been proposed in, uh, phase one. Another small office, it's actually 350 square feet.
So there will be another office in the development in phase two?
Yes.
Okay. And then another quick question, um, for phase one. I'm just worried, uh, maybe this is a question for Mr. Salvatore. How high is the proposed building compared to the two houses that exist now?
Good question. The, go ahead, Ryan.
Uh, I'm just gonna pull up the drawing, so I just have it in front of me. The, so it's, it's a little bit of a question of where you're measuring from, but let's say you're measuring from Houston Lane from, from the.
Facing number eight, Houston Lane.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we are at, the ridge height is about 28 feet. Sorry, I'm just doing the math in my head. 25, yeah, excuse me, 29 feet from, if you're on Houston Lane, on the southernmost part of Houston Lane.
Right.
I don't know exactly what the existing ones are. I would guess probably somewhere in the range of low twenties, just, you know, it's, it's a guess. So maybe it's five or six feet higher.
It, it looks much bigger, but I know during your presentation, you said it wasn't going to be that much bigger. I was just worried about loom, a loom factor in the back over 16 Houston Lane. But, I mean, will that affect like, you know, sunlight patterns, anything like that?
I mean, I, I, I don't, we, we didn't do an analysis of, of sunlight patterns. I think there's no question that the building will cast a shadow. We can do the assessment to figure out exactly where the cat, the, the shadow was cast. And, and, and come back to you with some, some clearer picture of where it is relative to the other building.
I just want to make sure the neighbors know, you know, everything. All right, thank you.
I, I will also add that the, the proposed height is consistent with, oh, what's permitted also in the residential B zone. So one could conceivably build a, um, building that same size there, although it would be for, you know, less number of families. That same size building could also be built as a right in the existing zone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Uh, Mr. Salvatore, um, your, your reasons not to pursue any lead certification?
No specific, um, reasons. I, I will share with the commissioner a sort of personal view that I think there are better ways to achieve energy efficiency than, pursuit of a stamp by a particular agency. And I say this as somebody who, uh, has a, a, a lead credential. But I think you can be assured that the building will be built to, certainly at a minimum code standards, and I realize that those are intended to be minimums, but the standards that will exceed that. This is a building that, um, Mr. Sanseverino intends to hold. And therefore, I think you can see just in, in the palette of materials on the exterior of the building, a significant investment in the building. I think we can expect to see that carry through on systems and, and, um, thermal, uh, technology used throughout it. So I, I don't mean to, to punt on the question. I'm being serious about that, though. Realistically, from a, from a construction document standpoint, we haven't developed a construction document to evaluate, okay, are we going to do an R30 wall? Are we going to do an R36 wall, et cetera? But I think you should all feel, um, at ease that Tom is really committed to doing the right thing here, sort of across the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chris?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Thank you. John Chris speaking. Further on the, um, green aspects of the, uh, of the building, I'm wondering if you could maybe highlight a bit more depth, some of the, um, things that may be used, such as, you mentioned thermal windows, but also on-demand hot water as opposed to centralized hot water and other types of things one can do to, uh, decrease one's footprint and some of the things you're considering.
Yeah, uh, candidly, I think when it comes to building systems, we're just not there yet because the resolution of the, the drawings from a mechanical and, and an engineering standpoint just hasn't been, um, pursued for obvious reasons. We want to make sure that the, that the building is viable from a zoning standpoint. I think this sort of goes without saying, but it's an important consideration, particularly when you think about this within the framework of, of a typical lead considered project, that the location of the building is innately, uh, a, a, a green feature of it. The idea that one imagines people walk into the train station, walk into town rather than using cars. I think when it comes to particular material selections, we intend to be very sensitive to, to those types of issues. So as a baseline, we always specify VOC free paints, formaldehyde-free, uh, materials when it comes to trimming out the interiors of the buildings. And, and so I, I, again, I think at this point, it's tough to really pinpoint on, on specific measures, although I would be happy to come back with a series of options for our next, um, meeting, or not so much options, but a series of intentions for our next meeting, um, and we can give it some more thought.
One other question on that. You, you mentioned, uh, the brick that's going to be used for veneer in several spots in the building. Are these actual bricks put in by a bricklayer, or is this that kind of peeling, big brick?
The intention is it would be actual bricks.
Okay, thank you.
Question? Mr. Salvatore, um, could you, uh, maybe describe a little bit about the mechanical units? And, uh, maybe some of the other noise generating things like the emergency generator, where that would be located?
Yeah, at this point, the intention is that we will locate them in a, uh, valley on the roof. Actually, this is a, um, a strategy we've used successfully on a couple of other projects where, um, because you don't, uh, there, there are two ridges, we can create two ridges without you perceiving it from the exterior of the building, and we can create a well up there, um, to, to conceal these things. So it not only performs optimally from an acoustical standpoint, but also from a visual and an aesthetic one, particularly on a site where frankly, there isn't a great place to put that stuff, going back to, to Jackie's comments earlier about this building really not having, or she put it, multiple front elevations. There's really no rear elevation where one might feel comfortable tucking this stuff outside.
Any other commissioners before I open it up to the public? Okay, um, who from the public would like to address this application, please?
Yeah, I guess I'll go first. Uh, my name's Todd Lampert. I am the managing member of the Main Street Group. We are, uh, located at 46 Main Street. My driveway is located on Heritage Hill directly across from the project that's going to happen. And it sort of sits in between where the parking lot was originally, uh, proposed and where the lane comes out. And we agreed before today that I would hold off any comments till the next session. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. I'm reserving those rights. And I think it'd be good to have the traffic study, uh, expert there to next, uh, session, so that we may have some questions for him. So as of right now, I'm just sitting back and listening, but we'll ask some questions at the next session.
Okay, Mr. Lampert, I would encourage you to consider, um, posing your questions, uh, to the applicant, uh, sufficient time before the meeting, so the applicant can be positioned to address your questions, okay?
Now, I agree that I've already spoken to his attorney and I've spoken with Tom. We, uh, actually had an opportunity to, uh, go over to the property and I told him I'd be in touch with him.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank, thank you.
Other members of the public?
Um, one second. Mr. Green, did you want to speak as well?
Um, I'm happy to speak. Uh, for the record, Joel Green, representing, uh, the Owen Oak Association and abutting property owner. I would, uh, join, uh, in Mr. Lampert's remarks. We have had some discussions with the applicant, uh, regarding some concerns that my client has regarding this project. Uh, we are trying to work through some of those concerns. They relate to the intensity of the use and, uh, while my client is generally satisfied with, um, a residential use of those properties, my client has some concerns about the potential for future commercial use of the property. Uh, we are trying to work through that. And I also hope to reach out to Ms. Corson and, uh, you know, discuss those issues with her as well, as well as with Attorney Lampert. And we look forward to resolving those issues, uh, with the applicant in advance of the next hearing. But, um, I understand the chairman's, um, instruction to Attorney Lampert, and, uh, we will try to, uh, pose our questions and concerns to the applicant in advance of the next session. And I certainly appreciate, um, the commission, um, holding this hearing open. And, um, I suppose on an unrelated note, I'm sitting here noting that, um, I just want to say that your production quality is excellent in these difficult times. And I've been, uh, to a lot of hearings in a lot of towns and, uh, you take a backseat to no one in New Kane, and I just want to note that. So, thank you.
So we got that going for us. Thank you, Mr. Green, and I appreciate, um, you, um, committing to, uh, the same thing to proactively, uh, discuss, uh, uh, address this with the applicant beforehand. Other, other members of the public?
Give me one second, uh, Mr. Chairman.
I, I had one more comment if it's okay. Um, we had discussed tonight.
Mr. Lampert, why kindly repeat your name, please?
Uh, sorry, Todd Lampert, uh, managing member of the Main Street Group. We have discussed a, a phase one and a phase two. I would also appreciate, uh, if they would discuss the potential for a phase three, if they ever purchased the other property, that is contiguous to theirs, because that is a plan of theirs. I think it's important, uh, that we have transparency with what the entire project might look like coming out of the one lane.
Okay. I'm sure the applicant has duly noted that. Um, thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hold on one second. So we have, um, Mr. Sacks or, or Terry Spring, do you, either of you want to speak on this matter? And then, uh, the only other person is WZ's phone. Uh, Ms. Corson, I don't know if you want to speak again, and, um, a person named Nancy.
Yes. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, no, I just, just wanted to reiterate again that, you know, phase one, that was, that I was okay with. But my concern in my opposition was the retail as it pertains just to phase two and the, uh, and the unknown use down the road. And should it change hands? I know what Mr. Sanseverino's, um, vision is, which is wanting to keep it residential. And he's actually did share with me the preliminary, um, concept for phase two, which is some concern with the magnitude of that, but I'll wait till that's all shared with the commission. But, um, again, I just wanted to just make sure that everybody was sort of clear where I stood on the two phases of this project.
Thank you.
Well, I've, I've offered everyone the opportunity. I've unmuted them and I've asked them in the chat room if they want to speak, and I haven't received any positive responses from Terry Spring or from, um.
Okay. Okay. This is Kaufman. Um, why not just extend the map change to, um, the current, to phase one?
Since we have every intention of eventually bringing a phase two, we thought it would be, uh, appropriate to bring it all now to, to let you know that's the intention for, uh, for the owner. Certainly, if, uh, the commission is supportive of, uh, phase one, then, um, could potentially limit it to phase one, and we are happy to continue a conversation with staff. Does, or does the commission, how does the commission generally feel about limiting that?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Abney, um, any other questions from your end for the applicant?
Um, not at this point. So we, some of our responses came in like they stopped to answer engineering's comments. They came in just the other day. They were forwarded to you at the same time. They're forwarded to the applicants, and they were also posted online. So there's some, there's some questions I need to, um, get addressed just in general.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Well, oh, we'll just use the next few weeks to do that.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, um, last call, so to speak. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? No? Okay, um. This is Kaufman. I, I will note, um, that historically, and this is not a voice of opposition. This is just food for thought. Historically, the commission has thought long and hard about extending, um, the footprint of, of, let's call it the town. So it's, it's something that, and, and we, we have done it in the past. We've, uh, and then in the past, we've actually pulled the footprint in as well. But it's something we, we, we give a very good amount of thought to, um, before we do it. So, and commissioners, help me out here. Lynn, help me out here. So what I have is, so for follow-up, you'll be following up, um, with, um, the respective lawyers. You'll be getting us phase two site plan information. You'll be following up on the town engineer items, and you'll be following up on a revised planting plan. You agree with all that, right, Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and commissioners or Lynn, did I miss anything? I see Mr. Ward, Dick, Dick, did I miss him?
Wait, I, I.
Unmute Dick or Dick unmute Dick?
I'm muting him right now.
Okay. John, you'll, John Chris, you'll be next. Dick's not, Dick is still muted.
Yes, I'm looking, go on to, um, um, uh.
There. Okay, just a, a very quick one. With respect to the maintenance of the private road and the parking areas, it was already mentioned that each of the unit occupants would share the cost. I'm assuming that there would have to be some form of a homeowner's association in order to provide appropriate management of, of any necessary maintenance.
Yes, of course. If and when it, uh, it goes to a private ownership or homeowner's, uh, association ownership model, that would be appropriate. But as of right now, if Mr. Sanseverino intends to hold the, hold his one, hold phase two and operate them as rental units. So he would remain in charge of that. But certainly, he can work with Ms. Corson as well. But I think, Tom, I don't want to speak for you. I think that you maintain that now and probably would continue to do so as, uh, as a singular entity owning all four properties. so as a singular entity owning all four properties. Tom is nodding yes.
Okay, great.
I'm not sure if it's necessary.
Okay. Deck, you're all set?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Cris?
Yes, following up on Mr. Ward's comment, which I think is very appropriate, is the issue of the ownership of the lane itself, and really what the dimensions of the lane are. We have Ms. Corson, who uses that lane to enter and leave her own property, and so does it go up to her property? Does it include that traffic circle area? I'm not quite sure what's included. And to the extent the ownership is unclear, it becomes perhaps risky that at the end, it's one of those they went that way situations as far as ongoing maintenance and so forth. And I'm just wondering how that could impact not only Ms. Corson, but also the residents of this proposed development and the residents there now.
We can follow up with that in more detail at our next meeting, but to answer your question, in short, the lane itself, or Houston Lane, ends at the turn, at the turn of that property. It's a straight, a straight shot, and then the paved area where the circle is, that's all part of numbers 12 and 14 owned by Mr. Sanseverino. There are easements that exist for all the property owners to pass and repass over Houston Lane to get to those three lots in the rear.
So when the lane cuts to the right, as you're entering the area-
Yes.
Then I guess if you're heading east, it's that corner that it becomes Mr. Severino's property, or?
That's correct. It becomes private property. It's functioned and has maintained, been maintained for years as driveway space, and has been, has been paved in that manner as well. So I'll provide you with some photographs, so that you can have a better understanding of how that works. But if you are looking at this, and here I am getting very close, because I can't see, you come Houston Lane, look at the word Houston, where you see the H, okay? And then we, you see how this comes out as like a little point? If you see where that point is up there? Continue north, Lynn, yep, there you're following it, and that little point, that's where it ends. So when you, where the line goes through Houston Lane, as you take that right, that's where it becomes private property. But it is functioned, and there are easements that govern it. We have studied, we have all the dimensions of this lane as part of the development plan, it will be widened in certain points as well to accommodate, to better accommodate emergency vehicles, and it meets all of the requirements for dual-passed, of course, two-way traffic.
I think. Okay, anybody else? I got commissioners, I'm good? Okay, super. Thank you, everyone. This application item's number two and number three are continued to our August 25th regular meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Okay, commissioners, regular meeting, item number four, deliberation, any possible action on a closed public hearing item. So we have 102 Park Street site plan, do I have a motion for approval or denial? Anybody?
I'll move it for approval.
Is that Mr. Cassavant?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cassavant, reasons for approval?
Sounds like a great use of property that already exists downtown.
Okay, and do you, well, let's get a second, do I have a second? I think I saw Mr. Cris. Okay, second for Mr. Cris. I guess the one question, Mr. Cassavant, you moved the motion, did you want to do anything about conditioning the sign slash logo?
Yeah, I believe we should condition it on the sign not being so obtrusive as to have denigration of the space, I don't know how we write that. But that big, I, the look, my fear is that we'll have this big orange ball logo down there on the corner between the CVS and the, I guess it's a Merrill Lynch.
I would suggest that the sign be limited to the name of the facility with being black letters and no logo circle or anything like that.
I would second that.
Mr. Cassavant, you moved the motion, are you okay with that?
I think that's a better suggestion than mine.
Okay, great.
I mean, this is that woman's logo, though. I don't know that we want to like, I mean, I haven't seen it. Have you seen it? I looked over my materials, and I haven't seen it.
Yeah, it's on the last page of the site plan?
The last page, okay, sorry.
On the site plan application? But I mean, I typically defer to Jean, do we still have Jean?
Yeah, she's here, and she's unmuted.
I mean, Jane, historically, haven't we sort of stayed away from logos, or not?
We have, we actually are, don't allow logos on-
Okay.
It's in our downtown plan village guidelines.
Okay. Okay, I call the question, all those, and, oh, I have to take a roll call. I was trying to go to, back to pre-COVID, my apologies. Okay, John Goodwin vote, yes, Dream Grislecki?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Okay, great. It carries with the condition unanimously, thank you. Item number five, administrative actions or other matters is may properly come before the commissioner be commissioned. Lynn, can you pull up the 183 Sound View presentation we made to the Connecticut Siting Council? You have that handy, don't you?
Oh, um, hold on a second, I will get it.
Lynn's getting it, pardon me?
Keep talking, and I will get it.
Okay. So, as I think all of you are aware, on July 9th, was in the afternoon for the 183 Sound View proposed telecommunications structure, in the afternoon was what they referred to as the evidentiary hearing, in which intervenors posed questions to the applicant, as well as the Connecticut Siting Council. We were not an intervenor, we chose instead to present in the public session, which occurred at 6:30 that evening. Up front, before I forget, I want to thank Lynn, as always, but also John Cris and Dan Radman, who I specifically reached out to and asked for their help in putting together our presentation. So John, thank you for that, and Dan, wherever you are, thank you for that. One thing I did find out was, there we go, was a few days before the meeting, I found out we only had three minutes to talk, so I did have to sort of figure out what I really wanted to zero in on. But just to give you a sense of what we did, was my objectives in the presentation were, you know, first, to establish the fact that telecommunications regulations we had put together, we had put a great deal of time into, they were up to date, and they were well thought out. So I talked about the background of the process, as well as the fact that we used Glenn Schauder, and I also referred to and thanked Melanie Bachman for her help, because we had also used her in the process as well. And I then read that second bullet point there, these regulations are intended to establish guidelines, et cetera, et cetera, you know, those regulations. And, you know, and again, as I said, the objective was to just make sure the Siting Council, and by the way, I specifically said to the Siting Council that we acknowledged we did not have jurisdiction, but that, you know, we felt our input should be relevant. The second thing I made, I was clear to the Connecticut Siting Council, was that we were not there to opine on whether or not there was a need for a telecommunications structure there. We specifically stated that was, you know, that was not our remit, so to speak. Then passed on to the next page, Lynn? And when you think about it, this was the meat, and again, my ask to the Connecticut Siting Council was to consider the following items in their deliberations, so you can see there, pointed out that this, you know, this was in a visible area. Second, pointed out that the external mount on a tower was not a preferred option, but then went on to really get into, you know, here are the key points, and again, if it not an application in front of us, so it wasn't as if we were to go through the entire application, but zero in on what we felt was important to the commission. So we talked about the fact that towers should be, at least the height of the tower away from the property line, we noted that right now it's only 20 feet in the current application. Second, we noted that equipment shelters should be concealed within a building and look like something more New Canaan-like, noted that currently the setback there is only 20 feet. Actually, I just addressed what I just said, and then the next item was to talk about the shadow box fence. I, we decided to add in, air was, the request was to consider a review of the final rendering with the town planner, so, you know, sort of gave us a little bit more of an input there. And then again, on the landscaping plan, and everybody would be shocked that Mr. Cris made sure we had native plants in there. But, but very important, I'm kidding. But the key point we made was we felt that, right, you know, in the current proposal, more, more trees were being taken out than were being put in, and so we felt strongly there should be a robust plan, and once again, we asked that it be reviewed with the town planner. And then we noted for them to consider the bark-like texture. And I'll note that, you know, even though our three minutes were, you know, less than we would have liked, both in the evidentiary session, as well as in the comment that evening, there was a good deal of points made that the Connecticut Siting Council should pay some attention to our regulations. And I also understand in the evidentiary session, which I did not listen to, but I understand the Connecticut Siting Council, and their questions to the applicant specifically referred to our applications. And I'll also note in the first selectman, in his comments to the CSC, and as I think you all know, he was, he's supportive of a tower there, but he also pointed out in his own remarks that the Connecticut Siting Council should give careful consideration to our regulations. So, you know, I think one is, as best as we could, and for those of you who are a part of, you know, putting these regulations together, and we talked a lot about, you know, how could we carry some influence even when we don't have jurisdiction? You know, we'll see what eventually happens. The second evidentiary session was actually this afternoon, Lynn, I don't know if you heard anything about how that went, but, but, you know, I think we achieved our objectives, you know, with these regulations specific to this site. Lynn, you didn't hear anything about today's evidentiary session, did you?
I did, I actually listened through the whole session.
Anything for us to know?
Um, I mean, it echoed, it was just a continuation, the Sound View neighbors presented their case today, and they obviously brought in a neighboring site, and everyone harked back to our regulations, both members of the Siting Council, asked them why they weren't complying with some of the parts of our regulation, and so we'll see where it goes, they closed the evidentiary session today. They, if you're interested, if anyone wants, I can send you the link to the connect portal, if you haven't found it on your own, but the, they actually have printed transcripts of the first sessions of the public hearing, and the evidentiary sessions, you can find them online and read them, they're pretty extensive. And I suppose that these are going to go up as well, there's also Zoom links, so you can watch the meeting as well, if you're interested.
Okay, great. Okay, minutes, June 23rd, 2020, anybody have any issues with the minutes? Nope, do I have a motion to approve the mission, the minutes?
No move.
Mr. Ward, unfortunately, I have to read a roll call, this is painful, I know. John Goodwin votes yes, Dream Grislecki? John Cris?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia? Claire? You want to unmute yourself? Just give me the, give me a thumbs up. Ken, thumbs up? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Ward?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
I wasn't seated at that meeting, can I vote for them?
Uh, no, kindly abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Night.